Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Rector, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your presence and wisdom as we gather here today. We ask that your hand be on the tiller as we navigate the turbulent waters of this life. Guide our hearts and our minds as we make the decisions on the matters that are here before us today this evening. We ask for your blessings not only on those gathered here today, but also on those whose lives are closely linked with ours. Give sanctuary in your heavenly home to those whom we love but see no longer. We pray for the safety of all our first responders and for those serving in the armed forces of our country. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Before we proceed, I'd like to inform everyone that Councilperson Butler Barlow is unable to attend this evening and has been excused. The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of January the 18th, 2023 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712 has been presented at this time. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by City Council, the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council motion is in order. Councilman Fawcett.
To approve.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Councilmember Johnson, can you please cast your vote? No problem. Thank you. The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Next item is approval of the minutes from the July 6, 2022 work session and regular meeting. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams.
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Williams, Vice Mayor Ward.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Additionally, City Manager Moore has information regarding public hearing item number 20. Mr. City Manager, please provide City Council with an overview.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council staff is in receipt of a written request from the act to withdraw item number 20, CUP 2022-22, as applicant is not pursuing this CUP request any further. The following are the specifics. Item 20 is a public hearing to consider in ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a used parking commercial not owned or operated by a public agency on property located at 130 Mae Away Zoning Map 20*22J Parcel 3, account number 306004631, CUP 2022-022. At this time, I would ask City Council's consideration of a motion to amend the January 18, 2023 City Council agenda to remove the public hearing listed as item number 20 from this evening's agenda and adopt the remaining remainder of the agenda as presented.
Just for clarity, anyone who is in attendance tonight regarding public hearing item number 20, please note that the City Manager has advised that the applicant is requested to withdraw the application. Therefore, a motion is in order to amend the agenda to remove public hearing item number 20 and to adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented. The motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett.
Mayor, I move to accept that motion to remove item 20 and to accept the remainder of the agenda as presented.
Okay, we got a motion for approval. Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Doeman.
Okay, hearing none. Please present the items for consideration.
Consent agenda item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate American Rescue Plan Act Tourism Recovery Program funding from the Virginia Tourism Corporation for the Suffolk Department of Tourism. Item number eight, in ordinance to accept and appropriate V Stop Reduction in Domestic Violence Grant from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. Consent agenda item number nine, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Operation Ceasefire Grant Program for the Suffolk Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. Consent agenda item number 10, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for the City of Suffolk Litter Prevention and Recycling Program and Extended Polystyrene Campaigns. Item number 11, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue and consent agenda item number 12, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Program and to transfer local urban maintenance funds for repaving sections of locally owned road segments.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, in regards to item seven, the city is in receipt of $110,000 in American Rescue Plan Act Tourism Recovery Program funds from the Virginia Tourism Corporation. The funds will be used for marketing and advertising expenses to promote tourism in the city impacted by the COVID pandemic. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by $110,000. No local match is required. In regards to item eight, the city is in receipt of $56,650 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services in support of the Commonwealth Attorney's Domestic Violence Program. The funds will be used to assist with funding a full-time prosecutor. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by $56,650. A local cash match in amount of $18,833 is provided for in the consolidated grants fund budget for fiscal year 2223. In regards to item nine, the city is in receipt of $326,500 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Operation Ceasefire Program in support of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. The grant will be used to hire an assistant Commonwealth attorney and a part-time legal assistance. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by $326,500. No local match is required. In regards to item 10, the city is in receipt of $27,514.50 from the Virginia Department of Environment Quality in support of the city's litter prevention and recycling program. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by the $27,514.50. No local match is required. In regards to item 11, the city is in receipt of $21,781 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management in support of Suffolk Fire and Rescue. The grant will be used for emergency management salary match. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by the $21,781. Local cash match in amount of $21,781 is provided for in the consolidated grants fund budget for fiscal year 2223. In regards to item 12, the city is in receipt of $1,499,999 from the Virginia Department Transportation State of Good Repair Program. The grant will be used to repay six road segments within the city. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by the $1,499,999. A local cash match in amount of $704,114 is provided for in the road maintenance fund budget for fiscal year 2020-2223.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Williams.
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval for Councilman Williams. Councilman Bennett. We got a second from Councilman Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is a land lease agreement buy-in between the City of Suffolk, Virginia and Shenandoah Cable Television, LLC for cable utility cabinet locations on city-owned property at the North Suffolk Library, Tax Map 12*31G*1. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
At this time, Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Just give the screens one more sec before I walk you through it. As we wait for those to populate, there we go. You'll recall that Chantel will be our latest broadband cable provider in the City of Suffolk. This body has taken action previously on a right-of-way access agreement and most recently the franchise agreement, which is currently being routed for execution. So they're off and running. The point of presence down at the Health and Human Service Building is almost complete, if not complete, and they're actively putting broadband infrastructure along the East Washington Street sections of our city. They're looking to turn on the northern Suffolk part of the city, hence why we are here today on this public hearing as well as the next one. So what we're talking about with these utility cabinets, there's two. This one up at the North Suffolk Libraries would be 20 by 20. You can see some photos of a vertical cabinet which has four bays as well as an adjacent generator. Be very similar to something you may see adjacent or next to a right-of-way intersection next to a traffic signal. The site for discussion in your package for the lease agreement is just is accessed off of the North Suffolk Library Employee Parking Lots. That's off to the left. Customers are to the right there, so it'll be out of the way. It's also off of Bennett's Creek Park Road for access, so it's a safe location. Couple of key items. So again, we're talking about a 400-square-foot piece of property for the cable facilities, 10-year lease with five, with an additional two five-year renewals. They're paying a rate of 120 per month with a 3% escalation per year. They'll be handling their maintenance and then we have the ability to approve fencing and landscape screening. Happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
Each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and we'll have three minutes to provide their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Yes, I'm Danny Agee, 111 Downing Street, Roanoke, Virginia. And I'd say I'm happy to be here. As Kevin highlighted, we did just activate our first site at 135 Hall Avenue as of December 31, and we're actively passing homes today and have already passed many homes with fiber optics. And for this particular lease, it would help us reach the further distances outside of the area in the northern district of Suffolk. That's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. Councilman Fawcett.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve this ordinance.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Johnson.
I'll second that, please.
Second for approval from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next public hearing is a land lease agreement buy-in between the City of Suffolk, Virginia and Shenandoah Cable Television, LLC for cable utility cabinet locations on city-owned property at the G. Robert House Water Treatment Plant, Tax Map 10*53. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Again, Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. So one more for you this evening for consideration. This would be working towards the Chucka Tuck area of the northern part of the city. Little bit smaller than the one that we just talked about. So this is a 12-by-12-foot or 12-foot by 12-foot facility or a two-bay with the adjacent generator. You can get a photo idea there. This location is following Bob House Parkway as you come off of King's Highway, so as you're heading towards the water treatment plant tucked out of the way on our property. So again, it's a little bit smaller, so 144 square feet. Again, same lease terms as before, 10-year lease with two additional five-year renewals. Because it's smaller, the cost per month is $75, but still with a 3% escalation. And again, we would have Chantel maintain the site and we would approve fencing and landscaping. And I'm happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and we'll receive three minutes to offer their.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Danny Agee, 111 Downing Street, Roanoke, Virginia, 24019. And in this secondary one, as Kevin highlighted, we have two of them that are up north because of the way it lays geographically. The first one was to the east and the second one is to the west. Mr. Provide Services up there as well. Thank you.
Welcome. We have our next speaker, please. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams.
Move for approval.
Councilman Ward, Vice Mayor Ward. Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk. It changes the zoning from CP Commerce Park Zoning District to M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District Conditional for property located at zoning map six parcel 36, account number 306001420. This is RZN 202212 Conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council. Interim Director of Planning and Community Development Kevin Wine will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The application following this one is kind of a companion application. That's for a conditional use permit. So as we've done in the past from a presentation standpoint, I'm going to kind of provide you with an overview of both applications at the same time as they are related. So what we have is two separate applications. The first being a conditional rezoning request to change the zoning of parcel 6*36 referred to in staff's report, or as I will refer to it in this presentation, is the north parcel from CP Commerce Park Zoning District to M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. This would pave the way to allow for the existing Hampton Road Sanitation District, also known as HRSD, Nansman Treatment Plant, to further operations on the north side. The rezoning is not necessarily required to do that, however, with the north parcel playing a role in their long-term expansion plans, they ultimately plan to combine the north and south parcel, thus having one zoning district would be preferred. The second part of this is a conditional use permit. This is CUP 2022025. That's your next public hearing. It was submitting concurrently for both parcels, the north and the south. The rezoning must precede the CUP in order to, for the uses proposed on the north parcel to be allowed. So the purpose of the CUP for the north parcel is to allow for the three new uses on this parcel as an expansion of the plant. Whereas the purpose of the CUP for that southern parcel, which I'll show you here in a moment, is to amend the existing CUP that exists for that property, primarily to increase the amount of allowable gallons per day that the existing sewage treatment plant is permitted, in addition to adding some recharge wells to the site. So HRSD submitted this rezoning and the concurrent CUP in an effort to achieve their sustainable water initiative. Sustainable Water Initiative for Tomorrow. That's their SWIFT program. And the new facilities on both parcels would support the ability to further filter and clean the wastewater to drinking water quality standards before depositing the water back into the underground water table using the recharge wells. So here we have that northern parcel. This is the one that is subject to the rezoning. The conditional use permit for this one is limited to allowing new uses. Currently, there's no existing CUP on this parcel for wastewater treatment plant and associated uses, so this is where it would be expanded to. The subject property for the rezoning, which, as I noted, is the north parcel here, is 90 acres in size and is currently forested with private roads that meander through the site. It is, excuse me, owned by HRSD. Here are the properties collectively. To the south there, you have that M2 parcel, which is the south parcel; to the north there, the north parcel. The south parcel is 127 acres in size and only subject to the CUP here, which would amend its existing CUP. But this is where the existing HRSD Nansman Treatment Plant operates. So there is some case history here with the property. The north parcel received a site plan approval in November of 2019 to demolish various old structures, modify the private streets on site, and to stabilize the existing bank along the James River utilizing riprap. If you've been on the Monitor Mayor Mac, you've seen that project under construction. The south parcel received a conditional use permit in August of 1992 to allow the HRSD wastewater treatment plant capacity to increase from 10 million gallons at that time to 30 million gallons per day. The existing SWIFT Research Center received a temporary use permit in 2014 for an instrument to measure wind and collect data. In 2016, a temporary use permit was issued for the demonstration facility with the SWIFT Research Facility approved in 2017. So this is a conditional rezoning for that north parcel. And as such, we do have a proffer statement. Here is the proffer statement. Very important in this case is that they are basically proffering that the uses will be limited to those supporting the facility itself. There are a lot of uses that are permitted as a matter of right in the M2. This eliminates all of those from the equation. So what this proffer statement does is limit it to a sewer treatment plant, as is existing on the south parcel, utility facilities not specifically enumerated, such as anything associated with this wastewater treatment plant, research laboratories and development facilities, as is the SWIFT program and their demonstration facility, and any outdoor operations and storage that would be kind of in tandem with that wastewater treatment facility. Here we have a conceptual of the entire site, the blue indicating the existing, or the property where the existing HRSD facility is, the yellow there to the north, the envisioned expansion to the north. So the Nansman SWIFT facilities are depicted in yellow on the north parcel. The advanced nutrient reduction improvements are depicted in blue on the south parcel. The SWIFT Research Facility is depicted there in the middle in green. And the recharge wells are depicted by the red dots located throughout the site. So the proposed improvements, that are proposed to have various SWIFT facilities, such as the SWIFT Water Pump Station, a backwash, equalization pump station, gravity thickeners, and a dewatering building. There are a total of six recharge wells proposed on this north site. The various facilities are associated with the processing of wastewater that comes onto the site. For the expansion on the existing site, the applicant proposes advanced nutrient reduction improvements to the existing Nansman Treatment Plant, which would expand the capacity from 30 million gallons per day to 50, increasing that capacity. Additionally, there are five recharge wells proposed on this property. So the existing HRSD Nansman Treatment Plant has been operating since the early 1980s and the requests would expand their current operations to meet current and future demands on sanitary sewer services and to meet the regulatory obligations from the Environmental Protection Agency. The size of the site, along with established vegetated buffers, will work to minimize any potential noxious conditions that are inherent with a wastewater treatment plant use. The operation of the proposed and expanded uses should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, as additional facilities would work toward improving the quality of the city's drinking water by providing additional processing of treated water to replenish it back within the city's groundwater resources. The city of Suffolk continues to experience both residential and commercial growth and the expansion of the sanitary sewer services would allow HRSD Nansman Treatment Plant to meet the current and future demands this development poses. The public interest and welfare should not be compromised by the proposed use at this location, as it would be providing additional sanitary sewer services to the city. The various city departments, including Public Works Storm Order, Engineering, the Traffic Division, and the Department of Public Utilities have reviewed both the rezoning and the CUP and expressed no concerns with these requests. Overall, the request to expand the current HRSD Nansman Treatment Plant operations is found to be appropriate for this particular occasion, and the expansion of the treatment facilities is necessary to support continued population and economic growth of the region. The conditional rezoning and CUP request for that north parcel is consistent with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and meets the criteria set forth in the Unified Development Ordinance. Thus, we are recommending from a staff level approval of both the rezoning request with the proffered conditions, as well as the CUP with the staff recommended conditions. In closing, the Planning Commission at their meeting on December 20th voted eight to zero to approve the resolution recommending approval of the rezoning request. That's RZN 2022-012. And the Planning Commission at their meeting on December 20th also voted eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of the CUP, CUP 2022-025, with the conditions noted in staff's report. That concludes my presentation on this item. I'll be happy to address any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five-minute period for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? This is to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Fred Taylor, on behalf of HRSD, attorney with law firm Bush and Taylor, 200 North Main Street here in the city of Suffolk. It's my pleasure to be here tonight in support of this rezoning request. Got a number of people here with me tonight. You're not going to hear from all of them. You can breathe with sigh of relief, but a number of folks here that are happy to answer questions or concerns that you all may have at the appropriate time. Jay Burnus, General Manager with HRSD, is here with us tonight, along with Lauren Zaramsky, HRSD's Chief of Construction and Design in regard to the SWIFT project. We also have a number of our professionals from the engineering firm Hazen and Sawyer tonight for any of those technical questions that you may have. You've already heard already from a great staff report from Mr. Wine's in regard to SWIFT, Sustainable Water Initiative for Tomorrow. And it's really more than just what this project's about. It is really about how our groundwater is going to be treated here in the local area for the future. This is important. HRSD has been a neighbor, a partner with this local community. Many people don't realize, they're not like Dominion or one of these other for-profit type entities. HRSD has been with us since its inception in 1940. It is a creation of statute from the Commonwealth of Virginia, and its managing body is actually appointed by the governor comprised of membership from the local service areas, including here in the city of Suffolk. And ultimately, their goal are the things that Mr. Wine's mentioned. It's a regulatory, it's addressing concerns from groups like the Environmental Protection Agency, but ultimately protecting our public health and in turn protecting our waterways through proper and effective treatment of wastewater. One of the many ways they do this is improvements in their processes, improvements in their technology. And that's kind of what brings us to this SWIFT project, which is sort of the next step in the future of our water treatment. As you heard, this treatment facility has been here over 40 years, been successfully operating in northern Suffolk since the early 1980s. If any of you have not been out there, we really have a gem in the HRSD plant and facilities that are out there. And I encourage you, I welcome you, to come and take a tour, learn about the processes, because while there, HRSD has a number of facilities across the Hampton Roads region. We should certainly be proud here in the city of Suffolk to welcome them to our home and really what I consider the hub of the activities that they're doing to ensure drinking water is protected across our community and likewise across the Commonwealth and back into our water systems and aquifers. So I do appreciate your consideration of this tonight. I do ask for your approval for this rezoning request, along with the proffers that have been made. We've attempted to box this up nicely, so there's no concerns about future rezoning or what can or will occur at the site. As I mentioned, we have a number of individuals here with us tonight. I will turn the balance of my time, or our time, over to Lauren Zaramsky, who can tell you a lot more about the technical nuts and bolts of this project here and what it means to our citizens and our community. Thank you.
We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening. Lauren Zaravinsky, Chief of Design and Construction for SWIFT with HRSD, 1434 Aerial Avenue in Virginia Beach. So thank you for your time, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, and Members of the Council. As you know, Suffolk is home to our award-winning and regionally significant facility. Our plans for expansion of that facility are legislatively required. It is the way, it is a key aspect of how the Commonwealth of Virginia has pledged to meet its Chesapeake Bay restoration goals going forward. So the expansions that we're discussing here today are a key feature of that and are an important way that we're going to be protecting public health and the local surface water quality. The expansion's going to be leveraging decades of research into wastewater treatment expansion, where we're being able to reach improved water qualities with actually a lower concrete footprint than we've been able to do in the past, and we're excited about those innovations being, taking place right here in Suffolk. Those improved water quality will set the stage for being able to apply advanced water treatment technologies, to be able to create drinking water, quality water, SWIFT water, and using that to recharge our depleted Potomac aquifer. Ultimately, the build-out and expansion of the projects we're discussing here today will meet the character of the existing wastewater treatment facility. It's buffered on all sides by the highway, by Streeter Creek, and by the trees that are on the, around the property borders. And we really appreciate Suffolk's support of this critical project that's going to provide benefits for the region, including creating a sustainable groundwater source and protecting local water quality. Thank you for your consideration.
We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else in attendance to speak in favor? If not, do we have one, anyone to speak in opposition?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jacqueline Brooks. I reside at 1305 Manning Road, 23434. I have several questions, one of which I just don't recall the details from the December meeting. How close is this expansion to already existing homes? Will this expansion preclude any further expansions in the future? How protected is the James River, current and in the future with rising water levels? Has that been taken into account? And also, how protected are, is the groundwater, the Potomac aquifer, and all potentially affected bodies of water from this? I mean, it's all well and good to say that the EPA has signed off on it, but I don't have a lot of faith in them. And so thus, I am raising those questions. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none, there is a five-minute rebuttal period. If you proponents would like to take advantage of that?
Okay, thank you. I had, wanted to address the comments on the Potomac aquifer and the EPA. It's true that the EPA is the permitting agency for aquifer recharge. However, the state of Virginia is coordinated as part of that. So part of the permitting process was actually to set up a legislative body similar to the one that was already existent to protect the surface aquifer, the Aquatuan aquifer in northern Virginia. So in, since the 70s, the Aquatuan reservoir has been receiving treated wastewater and actually taking that water and treating it to become a direct use for drinking water. So modeling that agency where there's an oversight committee and a lab associated, the state of Virginia has legislatively set up the Potomac Aquifer Recharge Oversight Committee and the Monitoring Lab, separate from HRSD, that provides oversight of the work that we're doing in addition to the EPA permitting, and also the Department of Environmental Quality, the Department of Health, there are some public members as well. All of that is part of the group that oversees the activities that are happening, not only as part of SWIFT, if there were other people doing aquifer recharge for the Potomac aquifer, this body would exist and oversee the work that we're doing, and they have their own separate monitoring lab that does that work. The protections that we have in place are related to how we are executing treatment. We have multiple barriers in place that come at both chemical, biological, and physical treatment methods, and there is online monitoring that makes sure that as the water is moving through these multiple treatment levels, if there is anything, whether a sensor just stops working, the whole process diverts water away from the Potomac aquifer until even something simple is wiping a screen off and so that a monitor or a sensor is actively operating. Those types of things are the online monitoring and protections that divert water away and protect the Potomac aquifer during day-to-day operations. Those operations, we have been test-driving for the last four years. We've been running the research center, including Potomac aquifer monitoring, and all of that information is publicly available through the Potomac aquifer monitoring lab and oversight committee that we have available. And so we feel that we are very publicly being protective of the Potomac aquifer, and we have a lot of pieces of treatment technologies that have been road-tested and are used for actually direct potable reuse in other locations here, and we've applied them and tested them for the specific waters here that we receive at the Nansman Treatment Plant. Additionally, we have considered the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, I'm not sure if I got all of those letters correctly, but the regional predictions for where rising sea levels would impact our facility and our designs take into account a moderate level of consideration, considering the range gets wider and wider, we go out farther from 2050, but we've looked out to 2050 and the considerations on where we're planning our infrastructure investments at the city of Nansman. And so we feel that we've taken into account our location. It's still a fairly good location for investing in wastewater treatment that supports the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak during the rebuttal period? We've got about a minute and a half left of rebuttal time. Is anyone else who would like to speak during the rebuttal? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance is presented for council's consideration. Vice Mayor Ward?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Vice Mayor Ward. Councilman Johnson?
I'd like to second him, but I'd like to just speak to Mrs. Brooks for just one second. Mrs. Brooks, we've done a lot with these folks. And they, I assure you that this is the right way to go for our future. And they are more on top of this than anybody else in this room could ever be. And I speak with some assurances. It's a really amazing situation for our locale. And I can assure you too, talk to HRSD, they'll talk to you about it. I dare say if you go to the facility, they would walk you right through what's going forward because it's way out of, it's huge. And I feel, we feel, at least I feel blessed to have it in Suffolk. I think it's a wonderful thing, so, thank you.
Councilman Fawcett?
Yeah, just a brief comment. Lauren and your staff, you've come to one of our work sessions and gave us a really comprehensive overview of this. Your submittal was great. The information in here is superb. I want to commend you and your staff for the good work. It made it a little easier for us to understand. You spent a lot of time with us in our work session and kind of repeated some things tonight. So thank you all for coming out here and I'm fully supportive of the HRSD operation out there on that north end. Thank you.
Councilman Rector?
Mr. Mayor, if it's appropriate, and I'd like to ask Mrs. Zaransky if she would come back to the podium for a quick comment.
Absolutely.
Ms. Zaransky, for me, this is a little bit like deja vu because I was on the Planning Commission during that December meeting. And one of the things that you spoke about at that meeting that I found very educational, at least to me, and I'd like for you to speak to it again, is how important it is that we're pumping water back into the Potomac aquifer and what it's having, what its impact is having to do with ground level rising and falling in this area.
Excellent, thank you for the question. So what we had talked about previously, and I appreciate the opportunity to share again with those in the room, is what we are aware of is over the last 100 years or so of civilization in the Hampton Roads region and development, we have over withdrawn the amount of water that is present in the Potomac aquifer. So when we're talking about the Potomac aquifer, we're not talking the upper layers of superficial aquifers or even the immediate places where water percolates down through the ground here. The Potomac aquifer is a very large wedge-shaped water body that stretches from fairly far north, New Jersey almost the way down to North Carolina, and it's only recharged in a very small area along the fall line, which conveniently is along I-95, so the I-95 corridor. And it's rain that falls there and water that falls west from there, it percolates its way down. And so the natural recharge is so slow that the amount of water that we've pulled out and currently EPA was, not EPA, excuse me, the Department of Environmental Quality has acknowledged concern of the overuse that we as a civilization has pulled out in this area. So there's currently large permitted users, municipalities, industries, and they have fairly large permits to be able to pull water out. There's also, there's a few homeowners, but overall, there's a smaller group of unpermitted smaller wells that can pull up to another 40 million gallons per day out of the Potomac aquifer. All of that has over withdrawn it and caused the pressure to reduce within the Potomac aquifer, such that we used to have artesian conditions, water could come out if you had your straw all the way down into the Potomac aquifer. No longer is that the case, we're hundreds of feet below, and as that pressure conditions continue to reduce, the potential for land subsidence in the area. So we're talking rise in seas, you have land subsiding, the actual relative impact of sea level rise accelerates as we continue to pull water out. And so the opportunity here is that we have the water that we're using in the region, it's a resource that we have. If we continue to discharge it to surface water, it's immediately brackish and salty and out into the ocean. We don't have the opportunity to continue to use it here. And so that opportunity through SWIFT allows us to put it back into the Potomac aquifer, making it more useful for these industries and municipalities that have been, their permits have actually been cut back such that they can no longer rely on groundwater and DQ wouldn't be allowing additional users, excuse me, industries to come and invest in the area because they would not have groundwater resources available. So the SWIFT program would be able to place that water back in the ground available for anyone to use, no specific industry, just anyone in the area, at the same time providing evidence that we've seen that we'd be able to recover some of that land subsidence by restoring the hydrostatic pressures in the Potomac aquifer. We have, just to acknowledge one other piece of that, we've monitored that with the extensometer run by USGS that's on site. That data is publicly available through USGS and also some of the observations we've seen in the region about how ground surface elevation is closely tied to the, pull the draw of water out of the Potomac aquifer.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, we've got a second from Councilman Rector. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
Councilmember Johnson already provided a second, sir.
I wasn't sure, I was going to ask the question because in Councilman Rector's defense, I wasn't sure whether he seconded it either. But you want to take credit for the second. Next time, Councilman Rector. So we get a second from Councilman Johnson, but it was, it was a little weak, so just give us time. Do we have any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a sewage treatment plant and utility facility not specifically enumerated in outdoor operations and storage on property located at 6909 Armstead Road, zoning map six, parcels 1D and 36, account numbers 304219400 and 306001420. This is CUP 202225. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, again, Kevin Wine's at the podium to add anything additional there may be on this project.
I have really nothing to add, but just to, for the sake of others watching and you all, what the CUP does is, one, it allows for expansion on that southern parcel where the wastewater treatment plant and accessory facilities exist currently. But it will also pave the way for an expansion onto that northern piece. That is what the CUP does. So that's all I have to add. I'll stand by for any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponent, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five-minute period for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Fred Taylor of the law firm Bush &amp; Taylor, 200 North Main Street here in the city of Suffolk. Obviously, you've, you've heard quite a bit about this already, and I can appreciate brevity in honoring judicial and legislative economy here tonight. We're certainly happy to answer any further questions that you may have in regard to this project and specifically this conditional use permit. We do ask for your favorable consideration, and I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve the CUP 202225.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
I yielded.
What happened? You yielded.
If appropriate, I'll second the motion.
Okay. We get a second from Councilman Rector. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members, prepare to cast your votes. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
All righty, where are we? We're on 17. An ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to restore a non-conforming residential structure to an extent of greater than 50% of its replacement cost on property located at 7622 South Quay Road, zoning map 50, parcel 82D, account number 152870000. This is CUP 202230. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, again, interim director of planning and community development, Kevin Wine, will present the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is a conditional use permit request to renovate an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling by more than 50% of its replacement cost. I'll get into what that means in a moment, but this affected property is located in the Rural Agricultural Use District as it relates to the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The subject property is located at 7622 South Key Road. It is zoned A agricultural, and the surrounding area is comprised of other residential properties zoned agricultural and utilized as farmland and forestry. So in 2020, three years ago, the property experienced a fire. This fire significantly damaged the property. After the fire, the property owner had two years to make the appropriate renovations prior to a CUP being required. And those improvements weren't made at the time, but they're looking to move forward now. The applicant seeks to attain the CUP in order to replace the well, roof, windows, sheet rock, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC systems. The assessed value for the existing structure is $71,000 per the city of Suffolk real estate assessor, and the proposed renovation cost would be $169,000, which obviously exceeds the 50% of the structure's assessed value. The existing two-story home was constructed circa 1949 and features approximately 1,143 square feet, three bedrooms, and one bath. The applicant proposes to add one additional full bathroom in order to have two full bathrooms. So when you have these, what we call legal non-conforming structures, when repairs exceed that 50%, you're required to go through this process and obtain a CUP. As it relates to this structure, what makes it non-conforming is the setbacks in the agricultural zoning districts. So a front setback of 50 feet is required in the middle, in the agricultural zoning district, and 20 feet for a side yard setback, in accordance with the UDO. The house, as it was constructed, encroaches into both of those setbacks, the front and the side, thus necessitating this process. Here's the proposed floor plan as existing upon renovation. This application has been reviewed in accordance with section 3136, 31406, and 31801 of the Unified Development Ordinance, and found that the renovated dwelling will assist in improving the property values and appearance of the neighborhood, which should in turn enhance the enjoyment of the residents of the community. The property as renovated will continue to be in keeping with the character and development pattern of the neighborhood. Therefore, staff and its evaluation does recommend its approval with the conditions noted in staff's report. In closing, the Planning Commission at their meeting in December did vote eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with the conditions noted in staff's report. That concludes my presentation on this item. I will stand by for any questions upon the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker was asked to provide, is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members, staff. My name is Ena Copeland. I reside at 6225 Leafwood Road in the hollowed area of Suffolk. We are presently the owner of this property. As was stated, because of fire, the owner lost his life, was sentenced there years ago. And because we didn't adhere to the two years that you had to do renovation to the house, of course, we didn't own it in the last two years. We just purchased it maybe about four years ago. So we're asking for a conditional use permit. And as was stated, we have gone through everything, and the Planning Commission approved it. And we have been paying taxes on it, of course, ever since we've owned it, and that has been in excess of $1,000. So we appreciate if this council would approve this ordinance as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Councilman Johnson?
I'd like to move for approval and thank Mr. Copeland for doing this. It'll make our community look better.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to amend chapter 31 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Suffolk, specifically Article 4, zoning, section 31-411, use patterns of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Virginia. This is OTA 20226. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, member of council, Kevin Wine will again provide the overview.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, once again. This is an ordinance text amendment to amend the ordinance as it relates to cluster subdivisions in the city of Suffolk. So section 15 to 2286.1 of the Code of Virginia requires high-growth localities like Suffolk to provide provisions for cluster or open space subdivisions, as we do. The locality, it's important to note that the locality shall not impose more stringent land use requirements for such cluster subdivisions. Article 4 of our ordinance, section 31411, use patterns, contains alternative zoning bulk requirements for these non-conventional subdivisions and lots, of which cluster subdivisions are included. These include alternative minimum lot sizes, setbacks, frontage, and impervious cover requirements for conservation estate, hamlet, cluster, zero-lot line, and other types of subdivisions permitted by the Unified Development Ordinance. So there is a column in the table, a table at section 31411C, which lists alternative requirements to the applicable non-conventional developments relative to the zoning bulk requirements. And that's where this change would take place. So a cluster subdivision, this is our definition out of the Unified Development Ordinance, but it's a form of residential development that concentrates dwellings in a specific area with a corresponding reduction in lot area and dimension requirements. This allows the remaining land to be devoted to perpetual common open space, which may be used for recreation, both active and passive, and the preservation of environmentally sensitive areas. So if you're developing a, what we call a conventional subdivision in the city of Suffolk, I think that this is a good example. Say you're zoned, are... Say you're zoned RLM, that's our residential low-medium density district, allows for 2.9 units per acre. If you're doing a conventional development, you are required to provide the city with 7% of that area's open space. If you are developing that as a cluster subdivision, you will be providing us 45% of the overall area as open space, and that's held in perpetuity. So, that's kind of what cluster subdivisions do. They don't allow an increase in density, they don't allow for more units. They allow for those units that are permitted on the property to be concentrated in one area and have larger contiguous open space. So, cluster subdivisions provide a means of grouping or clustering lots and houses on a tract slated for development onto a fraction or portion of said land, allowing for the creation of larger open spaces and reducing the private and public costs associated with installing and maintaining expensive infrastructure, such as streets and utilities. Cluster subdivisions do not increase residential density, rather, the same number of homes are simply concentrated into a smaller portion of the land than otherwise would be developed. So, what are some of the benefits of clustering? One, it's an increase in land held as perpetual open space. Smaller lots result in less infrastructure maintenance costs for the city and its taxpayers. They do not increase the density, that's a common misconception with clusters. The balance of land is held in perpetual open space, the density on the overall property remains the same. It allows for flexibility, particularly when environmental features are present, and clusters have separate design standards, which encourage quality development. In fact, we have 26 separate residential design criteria associated with clusters related to enhanced architectural treatments and building materials that apply to clusters and not necessarily regular conventional subdivisions. We can do that because we cannot, from the state perspective, have any more stringent land use policies related to clusters, but we are afforded the ability to use other options to ensure quality development. So, what does this amendment do? Well, what's the purpose of this amendment? It's really to codify a reduction in setbacks. We go back to the definition and the purpose of clusters. The flexibility is there for a reduction in the minimum lot dimension standards. There's no minimum lot size for cluster subdivisions. It has long been the city's interpretation of this language, that that also led to a reduction in setbacks associated with the zoning district, and that is what this amendment seeks to accomplish, codification of that. So, here's that table I had mentioned, and important caveat from, this will differ slightly from what you all see in your packet as it relates to the side setback, I'll get into that in a moment, but it codifies a minimum front setback of 15 feet for cluster subdivisions. It require, codifies a minimum rear setback of 20 feet, or the minimum setback in the underlying zoning district, whichever is less, for the rear setback. And for the minimum side setback, in your packet, you have seven and a half feet for that side setback. If you move for action on this this evening, staff is revising their recommendation to a five-foot setback. The reason is, there are several zoning districts where cluster subdivisions are permitted in the City of Suffolk, that includes pretty much all of our residential zoning districts, and we're allowed to be less stringent than the underlying zoning district, but not more. So, with that being said, once you get to the RC zoning district, that's our RC, residential compact, onto the RU zoning district and the RU12, where clusters are also permitted, the minimum side setback there is five feet. So, if we were to move forward with a seven-and-a-half-foot side setback, as originally proposed, it would actually be more stringent than what the current ordinance is. So, that's why we're recommending that change this evening, and should you move forward this evening on this item, I recommend that you do so as amended, as staff is presenting this evening. And here's highlighted that section, the minimum side setback, which would be modified to five feet. So, the Planning Commission at their meeting of December 20th, 2022, did vote eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of this ordinance text amendment, and staff supports it as well. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
My name is Evelyn Jones. I live at 4921 Fennel Lane, that's in the northeast, where we have a lot of this cluster development being brought in. I really oppose cluster development in the first place, but to reduce the sides to where you can't get a car into your backyard if you have stuff to carry back there, to do landscaping, or to place a trailer in there or something, that's not good. And people that want to be able to bring, say like fertilizer, topsoil, whatever, to their backyard to spread it, to make it nice gardens and everything, you can't fit a car in there without, if there's a fence between the two properties, you can't get in there without scraping the side of the car, or the building, or the fences. So, I'm opposed to the reduction of the side setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Fawcett?
I'd move to approve, Mayor, but do we need to make an amendment to this because it says 7.5 in our book as we're voting on this particular ordinance? So, we need to change it from 7.5 to five feet? Is that what we've got to do?
We've got, I think, Councilman Fawcett's question is, five feet was mentioned for the side setback, and seven and a half in the ordinance is presented?
So, do we need to amend the ordinance to read with the exception of five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the amended ordinance, the minimum side setback would read five feet in lieu of seven and a half?
Yes.
Everything else?
Is okay.
That is the only change from what you have in your packet.
Okay, thank you. So, we've got a motion for approval with the understanding that the minimum side setback is five feet?
Right.
Councilman Johnson?
Does it have to go back through planning, though? They approved it for seven and a half, correct?
No, we can do it.
I mean, we can just overstep them.
We have the final say.
Okay.
If I could interject something here, if I'm not mistaken, the five feet is a state guideline?
Yes, so, in those zoning districts I mentioned, RC, RU, RU12, the minimum side setback today is five feet. So, the state enables us to, it forces us to create allowances for cluster subdivisions, but it forbids us from being more stringent than what the conventional subdivision regulations are. So, that's why that change was noted and made, as recommended.
So, originally, it was seven and a half because that was a number, but it doesn't adhere to the state guidelines, which require it to be at least five?
Which requires it to be no more stringent than our underlying zoning districts.
Okay, which is five?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Councilman Johnson?
Hold on, let me get your turn. One more time. Just help me for a second, because a nice lady made a good point about getting in your backyard. I like to garden, so there's no way to put products in your backyard or get a vehicle around the building in a cluster development?
So, it's, not necessarily. I think that we overwhelmingly see cluster subdivisions in our RLM and RM zoning districts, more so than anywhere, and that traditionally, we see a minimum proposed setback in those districts for these developments at about seven and a half feet.
Right.
In all reality, they may show those on the plat, but once they're building the building, you're getting a 10-foot setback on the side, or a 15-foot. It's really a market driver. Folks do like being able to bring stuff around their house, and builders are going to build as the market allows for them.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Councilman Williams?
I'd like to second that.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, and a second from Councilman Williams. Any other discussion, I'm sorry, with the change, with the seven and a half being five on the side setback? Any other discussion of the motion? I would like to say that this is a welcome addition because it was rather vague before, and not as clear as it should be, because originally it said none, so now we do have a set minimum front setback, and we have a minimum side setback. The minimum rear setback would refer to Table 407-1. So, it kind of takes the guesswork out of it, and not subjective, if you will. So, I welcome the change and fully support it. With that being said, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to reconsider previously approved zoning, RCN 2022-4, conditional, in order to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk, in order to amend the previously approved proffered conditions for the Bennett's Creek Quarter Development. This is zoning map 12, parcels 32 asterisk 1, 32 asterisk 2, 32 asterisk 3, 32 asterisk 4, and 32 asterisk CH asterisk 1. Account numbers, 306004377, 306004378, 306004379, 306004380, and 306004381. This is RCN 2022-4, conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Interim Director of Planning and Communication, Kevin Wine will provide this presentation also.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'll be brief on this item, but you may recall at your last meeting, a motion was made to reconsider this application, RCN 2022-004, as it relates to the Bennett's Creek Quarter Development that is currently under construction off of Shoulders Hill Road, very near the intersection of Shoulders Hill and Bridge, Bridge Road. Ultimately, I believe 417 units are proposed for the site, and what you all approved back in June of this year amended the existing proffer statement. I did so in three different ways. Proffer number two, you can see here, was modified to speak to the permanent condition of Lakoc Lane, and the access to Lakoc Lane, which is one of the roads utilized to access the site off of Shoulders Hill Road. The key change here is built into proffer three. Previously, before that proffer amendment back in June, the developer was allowed to construct up to 111 townhomes and attached condominium units prior to the completion of the intersection improvements that are beginning to get underway at Bridge Road and Shoulders Hill Road. What was presented by the applicant in June was an increase of 75 units. So, that number moved from 111 to 186 units as a part of that proffer amendment that was ultimately approved. And lastly, the developer created a new proffer in which they outlined the cost to be reimbursed to the city as $126,560.40 as it relates to the land cost and construction cost for the Shoulders Hill Road improvements. That would be a turn lane onto Lakoc Lane, and the construction of a turn lane on Shoulders Hill Road to Lakoc Lane. So, that is a snapshot of what was approved in June 2022 that you all have motioned to reconsider this evening. That concludes my presentation on this item. I will stand by for any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? This is to speak in favor of this ordinance.
John Napolitano, 1492, South Independence Boulevard. Good evening, Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Ward, City Manager Moore, and the rest of the council, and tonight, one time only, a special good evening to new council member, Rector. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for reconsidering this, and I would like to ask that these be distributed, if the mayor feels such to have those distributed to each of you. It is the new proffer that we would like to introduce. Again, thank you for bringing this back. As you are aware, when BCQ Bennett's Creek Quarter was rezoned in March of 2018, we were required to proffer that we would only receive 111 COs until the intersection of Shoulders Hill Road and 17 was constructed due to traffic concerns. Obviously, we asked for a schedule before we agreed to anything, and the schedule that we were given showed that those, that work would be complete around March of 2022. Town Bank, while doing their investigation for their appraisal, found the same schedule and felt comfortable enough to make the loan for the land. Based on the schedule provided to us, we did our projections and scheduled out the entire community with all of the infrastructure, such as clubhouses, pools, dog parks, gyms, et cetera, and when they would be constructed over the course of the community. And we felt that the timing of the road would work well with the sales velocity of this community. And so, we made a sound business decision and agreed to the requested proffer based on that schedule. Our projections played out correctly, and as of March 2022, we had not reached 111 COs at that point. However, and, excuse me, we had not reached that. The road, unfortunately, is far behind schedule due to many factors, and anyone that follows the news over the last couple of years can understand the reasons why this has happened with COVID and other issues that have happened in this country. However, the road is now funded and started, and as of today, the city website says it is scheduled to be completed spring of 2024. But let's forget about the bank, let's forget about the city's issues, let's forget about the developers' issues, let's talk about another side, and that's the most important side, and that has to be considered, and that is the human side. The residents that live in this community at this time, there's over, well, there's 180-some houses multiplied at. They pay dues to support the infrastructure, and their dues would have to be increased substantially to continue to support without additional residents. There are jobs that could be affected if this community suddenly comes to a halt. I believe, I was told, and I know it's dinnertime and homework time, but I was told that there may be some residents from the community here in support of that, and if they are, I'd like to ask that they stand up and be recognized. Thank you all for coming out. As I said, I know it's dinnertime and all, but a few did make the trip for that. There are a lot of innocent bystanders that are going to be affected who operated in very good faith. The residents in this community should not be burdened by this. I know that council and staff are tired of addressing this issue and would like it put to bed once and for all. So, having said that, we realize that there is a traffic issue at that intersection, and we want to do our part not to overburden it, but at the same time, not be penalized by it. We have always lived up to our obligations. In fact, there is a stoplight going in at the intersection of Richard Bennett Parkway and Shoulders Hill Road that we are contributing over 185,000 to, towards that stoplight when it's constructed, and that will- it's constructed, and that will alleviate a lot of traffic issues on Shoulders Hill Road as well. Therefore, I'm asking council to consider a proffer amendment that would limit the number of COs that could be received on a cumulative basis in a given year. And I'd like to very briefly read to you that change in that, and that is, moving forward, no more than 56 new dwelling units shall be issued a certificate of occupancy in 2023. An additional 48 shall be issued in 2024 with a cumulative amount of 104 units at the end of 2024. An additional 82 shall be issued in 2025 with a cumulative amount of 186 units at the end of 2025, and the remainder of the units shall be issued certificates of occupancy in 2026. Attached to what I'm giving you all is a chart that we used, and the proffer goes on to say, please find Exhibit A attached to these proffers. This is the outline we use to determine the number of closings each year. We are not proffering the schedule. We are proffering the cumulative number of closings in the years noted above. When construction of Bridge Road and Shoulders Hill Road is built, this proffer would be eliminated at that point. That would allow us and for the residents out there to continue the community, but on a controlled basis until the intersection is complete. I ask that council not delay the vote this evening and approve this proffer amendment so we can put this issue to bed. That way, staff won't have to devote any more time and energy to this, and I assure you, they have devoted a lot of time and energy to this, and I thank them for their help with all of this, and it will give them a solid plan moving forward. So I thank you all for your consideration tonight. I thank you all for your service to the city, and I am standing by if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Hi, my name is Jeff Felice. I am at 1067 Paragon Way in Suffolk, 23435. Mr. Mayor, City Manager, City Council, thank you for allowing me to comment on this proposed ordinance. My wife and I are residents of Bennett's Creek Quarter and support the proffer to allow the builder to continue the community. We'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? If not, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Council Chiefs. My name is Tom Ryan. I live at 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, which is right off Shoulders Hill Road. We stood here in the last month's meeting, I think it was December 21st, and talked and approved, you approved, 111 townhouses for this adjacent property here. We had a thorough discussion regarding the traffic issues up there on that, at that intersection. And although, Mr. Fawcett, you know this better than any of the council members because you live up there, you spoke at length about, hey, I don't want any more, I don't want any more traffic up here, you know, but I'd rather have some residential units versus commercial units, but I really understand the traffic issues up here. You pushed, you talked at length about the traffic light that needed to go in before any more development was. I appreciate what the developers are saying and the residents that are here, but this is a safety issue. I'm not against the extra units. I did not speak in opposition of the original 111 units. It's just, in my mind, it's poor planning. Yes, there was issues with the construction and is, are construction issues up there at the corner of Shoulders Hill Road and Bridge Road. I go by there every day, just like many of us do. It's a safety issue. Before we go further in approving any units, any more units or increasing, you know, the timeline on this, I think we just need to take a breath here. I know there's money involved and money talks, but there's people's lives at stake here. And I went up there the other day and drove through that. It's a very nice neighborhood. It really is. I drove there myself. I drove all the way back to that area where the development is being proposed. It's, you know, came home to my wife and says, it's nice. There's 30 or, there's probably 30 rezoning signs up there, so everybody knows also. I get it. I'm not holding anything against the developer, the people who live there, but there's a lot of other people who live in that area. It's a safety issue. Things need to be planned out better up there before any other development is approved or done up there. I'm sorry, we keep having this conversation, whether it's North Gate Park, the tractor-trailer parking lot, you know, I appreciate that that developer pulled that out, you know, because I was, I came here tonight to talk on that. He pulled it, they pulled it out. The other developer that was up there walked away from it. There's issues up there. We just need to take a breath here, see what we're doing for the safety of the people who live all over Suffolk, not just, and again, I appreciate, I live in an HOA also. No one wants to spend more money. I've been in business. No one wants to spend more money. I get it. But no one wants to die either. I don't, I'm not asking for any volunteers to be the first one to go down up here. We just need to take a breath with all this development up in North Suffolk, especially on Shoulders Hill Road. And I'm asking you, please, 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 there's a notation here that says there was a traffic study. I didn't see it. And then the gentleman, Mr. Napolitano, said he has a state, a timeline in terms of, I didn't see it. That wasn't included in any of this agenda. We talked about transparency for the people of Suffolk when it comes to these things. Put the information out there so we can all see it, read it, investigate it before we make a decision on this. You know, I appreciate everybody's position on this, but we just have to take a deep breath here, please. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Can I have our next speaker, please, to speak in opposition?
My name is Evelyn Jones. I live at 4921 Fennel Lane. That's just a hop, skip, and a jump from Shoulders Hill Road. In fact, I have to drive Shoulders Hill anytime I want to leave my house to go anywhere. Shoulders Hill is turning out to be an absolute nightmare. Whether you come in from Nansson Parkway, you come in from Peugeville, or you come in from Bridge, it's a nightmare. At one time, I was told by a person that I shouldn't worry about the traffic until somebody gets killed. Well, I'm here to tell you that someone along Bob White Lane died because of the traffic jam that exists in that area of the city. Ambulances were unable to attend this person. Now, you want to allow this gentleman, and I understand he's got to make money on this land that he purchased, he wants to build these houses. That's great and fine, but I say, until you improve Shoulders Hill Road, you improve the intersections at Bob White, Peugeville, Bridge Road, and Nansson Parkway. If you don't improve that, make it wider, I don't care, make it look like an interstate, but you've got to improve it. For me to go shopping down at the shopping center there, I have to make my trips when traffic is the least, and then I cannot stay there but so long to get home before the traffic gets bad again. I don't live that far in either direction from the major intersections, and they are just nothing but pure nightmares. Don't allow any more construction of residential property that accesses Shoulders Hill Road until the improvements are made to Shoulders Hill Road and the intersections that join Shoulders Hill Road. Thank you.
We have our next speaker to speak in opposition. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none, we have a five-minute rebuttal period?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me address a few of the issues that were brought forward. I appreciate the folks that came out. As far as the timeline, there was a timeline that was established. It was established in 2018 when the major rezoning went on, and that timeline was established by the city, and we made decisions based on that. It's not me that I'm as worried about as it is, it's the residents that live there that are taxpayers, just like the two folks that got up and spoke, who are taxpayers and voters, just like they are. They're the ones who are suffering in this, not me. They're the ones who are going to have a community that's not finished. As far as traffic studies and things go, those were all provided to the city, again, back when the rezoning was done. They're not provided again. Those are things that are on record with the city that the city can refer back to. So where he says he was not provided a timeline, I'm sorry, that timeline was there when we did the major rezoning way back when, and it was presented again in June. As far as the traffic study, that was presented in June. This is not about that. This is just about amending the proffer. As far as the other intersections that the woman spoke about, those have nothing to do with this proffer. This proffer simply has to do with the intersection of 17 and Shoulders Hill Road, has nothing to do with the light at Shoulders Hill Road and Richard Bennett Parkway. That light will be going in, and as I said, we will be participating, and that will help the traffic. But our proffer has nothing to do with that. The minute that that intersection is done, our proffer goes away. What we're asking for is, let's do this in an incremental basis so that the folks living there, the residents that live there, are not impacted by this. You know, I come to several of these council meetings, the two folks that spoke are here every month speaking against things, so I expected that. I expected them to be here. But this has nothing to do with that. This has to do with people who are living there, who are residents of this city, who have moved to this city and who are going to suffer if we cannot resolve this. And I think what we have offered in this is a very amenable resolution to this that will not overcrowd that road. In fact, if we lifted the entire proffer, we'd only add 1.5% to the traffic. 1.5, less than 2%, that's pretty minimal. But again, we recognize there's a traffic issue, which is why we want to introduce the limited number of COs a year so that nobody gets hurt in this. So again, I thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope you can look favorably on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak during the rebuttal period? Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the rebuttal period? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. Listening to everybody and their concerns, this is a significant change to the existing proffer, so I'd like to make a motion to table RCN 2022-004 conditional in order for city council to acquire the time to review and for the submitted to be revised on the proffer and to direct staff to do a, what am I saying? To have a new public hearing on February 15th. I lost my train of thought there for a minute, I'm sorry. February 15th, 2023.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilman Fawcett to table to the second meeting in February, which would be, do we have a date on that? I got it somewhere.
15th.
15th, that's it, to February 15th, and to schedule a public hearing at the same time with the information provided by the applicant. Do we have questions, comments, or a second? Councilman Johnson?
The proffer, the proffer that we're considering at this point is what's in our package. What is the proffer that he presented at the podium? Is that the same thing?
Sir?
The proffer that he left at the podium, is that the same proffer?
Yes, he's going to leave that for us to review and just...
But that's not in our package.
Based on the comments, it would be staging no more than 56 during 2023, no more than 48 during 2024, and that's cumulative, so if there's only 54 in 2023, then there could be 50 in 2024, but cumulatively would not exceed 140 in two years.
But I'm playing stupid here, okay? That's not here.
No, that's why we're going to table it, so we'll get it to consider...
For that reason alone, we should table it, as it is, because it's got to be in front of us.
No, I agree, and it's, I think the thing to do is to table it so we can review what's in that basket, because in spirit, what's in that basket, we can review what's in that basket, we can reschedule the public hearing at the same time, 30 days from now, which gives the public the opportunity to weigh in on it also. And I don't mean to cut you off if you get some...
I'm fine. I just, I haven't had one of these presented to me before where we didn't have information in front of us.
We don't, which is a reason to table it.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, Mr. Napolitano could have come back and, basically with the public hearing being open like it was, come back and request the entire build-out. But looking at it, you know, rather, what he's proposing is to stage it, because obviously, you know, we would probably not be in a position to grant a total build-out. When you look at what's there, I mean, in theory, I don't think I have a problem with it, but we need to look specifically what it is and then be able to ask questions in regards to those additional 56 units will create how many trips and address any safety issues or anything else we may want to think, think to address. To Mr. Napolitano's point, and I know there's no guarantees in life, when you're in business, I mean, you're rolling the dice every day, you open up the door, but there was a reasonable expectation for this project to be done by this time. Another thing we talked about, we don't need to approve any other developments. This one's already approved. There's nothing to approve as far as developments in houses. His 400-some houses was approved in 2018, was it? In 2018. So council is not approving any more development. What we're allowing for would be an exception to the original proffer, which was not to exceed a certain number of those homes being built until the Shoulders Hill Road 17 intersection was complete. So no fault to the developer, you know, basically what we'd have to consider is a compromise to allow a slower staging of those units with the expectation that, I could get Mr. Lewis up here and put him on the spot, but I won't, expectation that it would be finished within the next 24 months. That would be the hope, but we can't guarantee that. So the issues such as, you know, the traffic generated and the safety, and then we also look at the other side of the coin, and the other side of the coin is the jobs and the burden that it puts on the citizens that are there because they have to share in the upkeep of the development, so, and two more residents are built there to share in that expense, then they get hit with an inordinate amount of expense. So with that being said, I mean, I support the motion. I don't know if there's any other discussion. If not, we had a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett and a second from Councilman Johnson. And, was that right? Did you second? Who seconded? Nobody seconded yet. I'm glad somebody's keeping this straight. Okay, we got a motion to table for 30 days and reset the public hearing. Do we have any other further discussion, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Johnson?
Well, I will go ahead and second the motion from the standpoint that, you know, this project has been approved by this council. This project was intended to go forward. There is a road issue, there is a huge issue, but there's also a people issue here, and I have a real concern for the people that live there and the people in this city that expect it to go forward. I will second it, but we need real information in front of us when we do these things, so with that, I'll second.
Okay, now we got a motion from Council Fawcett and a second from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Reck... Councilman Richter?
Yeah, I want to echo Councilman Johnson's thoughts on this, and I'm sorry we didn't get this information earlier, because, you know, a lot of times in politics, it, it's not the art of getting what you want, but it's the art of getting what can be accomplished. And to start a schedule out in 2018 with the expectation that the road and everything was going to, and the intersection was going to be completed, I think was a reasonable expectation. But, you know, as Mr. Napolitano pointed out, COVID and everything else, you know, put a severe setback on a lot of, a lot of initiatives that are going around, not only in our city, but all across the country. So I think what he has, has offered is a very reasonable compromise that keeps his employees building houses, which is what they do, and it keeps the residents in that area from having their homeowners association dues and whatnot increased. So, like I say, I'm sorry we didn't get this earlier, because I, I think we, we ought to get this over and done with, but, you know, that, that having been said, you know, I guess I'll support the motion to table, because I do think that in all openness and transparency, everybody should see what's in that basket before them and have a chance to comment on it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, I want to get it straight there. Only reason we table it because we don't have the information that he just left for us?
Any other questions, comments? If not, we got a motion by Councilman Fawcett, a second by Councilman Johnson. Council members, prepare to cast your vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by vote of seven to zero.
Our last public hearing is number 20, which has been canceled, withdrawn at the request of the applicant. So we will move to ordinances, and we have none, we have no resolutions. We do have a staff report, we have a public safety update. Mr. Manager, will you please provide an overview?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we do have a two-part presentation this evening on our public safety update. It's going to be led off by Police Chief Chandler and then followed up by Fire and Rescue Chief Mike Baraki. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I'll give the screens just a moment to get caught up. I am before you today to provide a safety briefing relative to our police department. So we'll start off with a question that is generally asked, and it's a question that should be asked. What are we doing to deter crime? I think, I don't think there's anyone in the city that would not be asking this question right now, and it's very, very important that we discuss it. So one of the things that we did a few months ago was we refocused our efforts and concentrated areas to increase our effectiveness. So going back a ways, traditionally, the way our department kind of handled issues, we are very responsive to what our citizens are, are relaying to us, the things that they're asking us to do. So taking as a, for instance, traffic-related issues. If we had a citizen contact us and say, hey, you're speeding in my neighborhood, we put some technology out to try to get a report, if we found out it was speeding in that area, we would do what was called, in most cases, a directed patrol. That directed patrol would require the officer working that zone to spend a particular amount of time in that area, either every day or every week, or however it was set up. As our city is growing, we hear that as a lot of the conversation, as we're getting more and more neighborhoods, more and more roadways and streets. What we found was the officers are running here, running there, trying to fit all of this into a day. So what we decided was to pull back from a lot of that and get very, very specific and strategic about what we were looking at. So for the last several months, we've been focusing on three main areas, three main specific areas. Now, the officers would, in these areas, would handle this in their unassigned time, and we would also, in some cases, provide overtime resources, overtime pay, so officers could work off-duty as well handling this. The number-one thing was, traffic-related was Route 58 Corridor. As most of our citizens know, going up and down Route 58, we found ourselves with a lot of crashes, and the speeds in those areas were really a problem. We identified that. So the two big things that we wanted was speed enforcement and visibility. We wanted the cars to be seen out there, and we also wanted to write tickets. We have, I've been keeping up with the number of tickets that have been written in that area. Most of our citizens have seen the increase. We've gotten a lot of feedback that they have seen the increase in police activity out there. Now, that being said, there are a lot of times that you come past and you may not see a police car. You may not see it, or that person may be out on another call or what have you. Sometime call volume is high, but that specifically, even, even with the rest of the things that we're doing, is one of the things as a department we were later focused on. The second thing was, in the, the northern half of our city, Suffolk Meadows, and I know you all knew a lot about that truck traffic issue as, as well as the speed issue. So that was one of the things, it's a train in that area as well, that, those traffic issues, dealing with the legislation that you just passed, along with signage from Public Works and enforcement efforts, we've started to see some real change in that area. The third one is the one that is, is extremely important as well, and that's the downtown core area. What this basically focused on was quality of life issues, gang activity, focusing on areas that not only, not only just in the neighborhoods, but areas that we found gang activity or we found criminal activity to be afoot. We've noticed in some of our areas where, you know, this location seems to attract criminal element. So we wanted to put some police cars there, put some investigative resources there, so we could begin to deal with that. Also, we stepped up our foot patrols in the downtown area as well as bar checks. That's something that's new to our city, but it's something that we need to be diligent about, making sure that we're walking into the establishments, seeing that things are done the way they're supposed to be done, as well as going around those areas looking for potential criminal activity. So one of the challenges that we have is we are finding, and, and this is something that when we talk to our, our regional counterparts as well, there's no specific area where these crimes are occurring. I think the shootings are a thing that many of us have been talking about. It's been bothering a lot of us, and we're going to discuss it tonight. But what we found, and I have a graphic that I'll show you of the last 10 shootings in our city, now that was not, what's on that is not from this weekend, and we'll talk about that in a moment. But prior to this weekend, the last 10 shootings, and what we've seen is, it's been far apart, stretched apart. Historically, back when I first came, when I was a real police officer, they, we would go to an area, and we would find areas, and we would establish those areas as high drug, high-crime areas, and we would put resources in those areas. Well, what we're finding now is our crime and criminal activity is a lot more transient. In, in past times, most of your, for instance, your drug transactions were done in your neighborhood settings. Now we're finding more drug transactions being carried out in public parking lots. That changes dramatically what is taking place. Another thing that we're seeing is the fact of that other people from other areas and other locations, locations or localities are coming to our city to make transactions. So it may be, as a, for instance, one person from one of the seven cities and one person from the western part of the state, and if they want to make a drug transaction, they'll meet in the middle. So sometimes we have people in our city committing acts of crime that aren't associated with our city. So the locations in which they choose will be a little different than what we've historically seen. I can say that when you talk about a great thing that we have started to see in our city is our flock camera system. So these flock cameras have been strategically placed in, in, all over the city, but especially in the downtown area, and we have seen some really good information from that technology. That technology has helped us to solve some crimes, helped us to locate some people, because what it does is, it's, it, without getting too deeply into how specifically we use it, one of the things we're able to see is, once we have a vehicle identified, was that, did that vehicle pass this way? Did they go in this direction? If they didn't go in this direction, where might they be? Once we have a vehicle identified, we can also determine from that where that vehicle is a little bit better. So that technology has provided us a lot of information, and it's been very, very helpful through our investigation. As incidents, as incidents occur, we're shifting our focus to those areas. So again, and I'll, I'll just go in advance to the next slide, and it may be a little bit hard to see, but those yellow pins represent the last 10 shootings. And when, when you look back historically, what I'm used to seeing is where you may have two or three pins on top of each other. You're dealing with the same neighborhoods, the same general areas. We're not seeing that at all. We're seeing if you, if there's one right below the G in shooting that's way up there, and then you have the, the ones down at the very bottom, you have them to the right, you have them to the left. So I, I bring that to your attention to say that the incidents are spread out. But what we do try to make sure we do is, when we do have an incident, we try to bring resources to that area. Obviously, we are trying our best to forecast where these things will happen, but it is challenging because of the way, some of the ways that criminal activity has changed in recent years. So I want to talk really quickly about a few, some significant cases that we've had in 2022. So last year, we had 13 homicides. Seven of them were closed by arrest. Now, I want to make sure that that's clear. I know we, there was one of the media outlets that reported something different, but these are the actual numbers, these are the numbers that we provide to the, to the public. Of the six remaining homicides that are under investigation, we have three of those who we have persons of interest. And when I say persons of interest, what I mean is, we're trying to develop more information, because making the arrest is only part of it. Making the arrest gets us part of the way. Yes, we want to make the arrests, we want to make the arrests as quickly as possible, but it is very important that we provide the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office with enough information to effectively prosecute the case. So there are some cases that we have where we're, we've identified persons of interest, people we believe to be the shooter, but the, the case, we want to get more information. Now, whether that's information that we're waiting to come back from the lab, or information that we're waiting on other things to come back, each case is a little bit different, but we are making some significant strides. We also were able to pick up a homicide suspect for 2021 with the assistance of our federal partners, gathering some information, making contact with our federal partners, we were able to solve another case from 2021. Detectives investigated the tragic death of a four-year-old involved in the firearm. And I put this up because this was a significant case in our city, it was very, very tragic and very sad, but we did make an arrest in that case as well, and it's currently being litigated. Mr. Jonathan Jackson was arrested out of our state, and with the help of U.S. Marshals, he had actually avoided capture for over a year, and we were able to catch him. Also, Christopher Parsons was charged in our city, as well as, as you can see, Virginia Beach in Tennessee with indecent liberties with a minor and aggravated, I'm sorry, yeah, aggravated sexual battery. And we have also brought that case to completion. One of the things that, that I'm really proud of and that, that we have to put a lot of work in is our quarterly videos showcasing our cold cases. Just like any other city, we have homicides in our city that date back as far as you want to go with homicides that have not been solved. We don't forget those cases. We don't go away from those cases, even though those cases may not be reported on anymore, you may not see them in your local news, we don't stop working the case. So we go back and we redo these cases and we look at them. This is one of the things that we added, where we construct a video and we walk, in that video, we walk back through the information that we know concerning the case, and we put that information out on our YouTube page and our social media, hoping that we can solicit more information on those cases. So we try to put one of those out a quarter, so we can showcase some of these cold cases, because, believe it or not, after some time passes, sometime people realize, maybe I need to do something, maybe I need to say something, this has been bothering me long enough. So we, we continue to solicit the assistance of our, our citizens. Additionally, we conduct quarterly warrant sweeps targeting criminal actors within communities with, when significant crime is increasing. One of the things that we try to do is, and you don't hear a lot about this, because we don't, we don't broadcast it a lot until after it's done, but we will conduct some investigation, and we'll specifically put some, some staffing together to go after people that are wanted. This is one of the, the tactics that we use to deal with some of our gang activity, as a good, for instance. So when we start seeing things kick up in a particular area, we start looking for the people who are wanted, wanted in connection with crimes. Yes, we definitely do that all the time, but this is a very specific going after. This is, this is something that we really put resources together and try to make a, a real impact. So talking about some of our accomplishments, last year, the Special Investigations Unit, that's our vice narcotics unit, they seized $174,113 from suspected criminal activity. They also executed 57 search warrants for guns, gangs, and narcotics-related offenses. Members of our Special Investigations Unit, along with our net team, Neighborhood Enforcement Team, or our gang unit, was able to place 150 various charges in, in relation to that activity. In addition to our regular working cases and trying to find criminal activity, we've noticed that prescription drugs, as we see along the region, is an issue in our city. So we hit that from two different directions. Yes, we're still trying to make arrests, we're still making sure that we do everything that we can do to, to further identify that criminal activity, but we also provide a take-back program. Now, our take-back program is not like some other places where we do it on this day or that day. Our take-back program is every day. We have a red box, like a mailbox, inside our headquarters building, located at 111 Henley Place, just across the street from where we are now, and we have another one in our Sector 2 precinct, which is on Bridge Road. Citizens are able to bring their medication and dispose, properly dispose, dispose of their medication. What we have found, and, and I've worked a lot of burglaries in, in my time, and you find a lot of times that people will burglarize houses, and they'll go to the medicine cabinet and take the medication that you may have forgotten about, that surgery that you had five years ago, and they gave you OxyContin, or they gave you, or you may have some old Demerol, or, or some type of drug like that. They take those things and they sell them on the street. So what we try to do is provide to our citizens an ability, a place where they can easily go and dispose of that medication. You don't have to dump the pills out or anything, take it right in the pill bottle, put it in the box, the box is locked up, and then we come and dump that box. We have, over 2022, we secured 175 pounds of prescription medication. That is a lot of pills. We also have done 73 federal indictments for various crimes in last year. So that was the end of, of the presentation that I prepared, but I want to talk just a little bit about the, the activities that, that happened this weekend. I think, I think the crimes that took place this weekend really shook our city, because we know this is not Suffolk. And as a police department, while we are saddened by what happened, it has strengthened our resolve. As a police department, we are, we have stepped up. We're doing everything that we can possibly do, and I can't, I, I cannot give enough accolades to the men and women that wear this uniform and the work that they have done this weekend. Now, as these things unfold, you know, I, I hear the things, and, and you hear that there's no way we can go out and stop a person from shooting another person, but we can try our best. But we can try our best to make them want to do it somewhere else, and that's what we're trying to do. Um, the only thing we can do after a thing happens like what happened this weekend was really do everything we can possibly do to bring those actors to justice. So in the time that we've had to investigate these crimes, um, there was one that happened in front of a local business downtown. Um, we've made arrests in reference to that. Um, we're continuing to investigate, so it's not a whole lot of information that's come out because we have a whole lot of work to continue to do. So I'm, I'm sometimes a little slow to put out all our information because there are other actors and other people involved that we want to make sure that we, we have a chance to bring them to justice as well. Um, but we have made arrests in those, in, in the, um, one that happened in front of the business downtown, in front of High Tide. Um, we also had another one in the northern part of our city where we had some individuals come into our city and, and fight and three people were shot. Um, and I would like to say that in, in relation to the business, because I know there was a business that was discussed, um, one of the victims ran across the street to get help and they went to this business. And the business did what a good citizen should. Um, they rendered whatever level of care they were able to render and they called the police. And, and so when the police and medics responded, they responded to the place where they knew there was an individual hurt. Um, as we continue to investigate that case, we have very, very strong persons of interest and I expect we'll be moving on that case here very soon as well. Um, we've had some robberies in the area and we're, we're watching these robberies and we're seeing certain things. Um, we have made an arrest in the robbery. Um, we are looking for some additional information because we still have work to do. There's some other arrests to be made. So we're continuing to work and this is, these, these things happened this weekend and this is Wednesday. So as, as I know we're in, um, a time where information is almost immediate, in leading this department and leading this organization, I have to not only worry myself with the soundbites. I have to make sure that I see this through for the victims and for their families. And part of seeing these crimes through is making sure that we do the job wholly and fully. Oftentimes that means even though we want to jump out there and say, look, we did this, we did this, and we did this. Sometimes we have to stand back a little bit and make sure we have enough information to hand off to Commonwealth so they can affect the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, so they can effectively do their job. Because we have found when, when these folks go before the court, if our citizens see the court not convict, then oftentimes our law violators appear to be more powerful and we don't want that. So we really try to take our time and layer the information to make certain that first of all, we have the right person. And second of all, when we have the right person, we build a strong enough case that we are able to allow the wheels of justice to do what they need to do. Um, that is all the information that I have. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett?
Hey, Chief, thanks for coming out tonight and giving us this briefing. Very informative. Um, first commending your men and women in your investigative branch for having a pretty rough weekend to try to corral all that activity that was going on out there. And it's commendable that they've made some arrests and, uh, it kind of sends a message out hopefully that if you come here, you're not going to probably get away with it. So, I mean, that's the goal we need to be pressing out there and preaching is you come to Suffolk, you commit these crimes, there's a good chance you're, you're going to be found to be over as a resident in the western Tidewater region. So I want to say thanks for those men and women that were out, long weekend pressing to get this information because we all know there's evolving information. Anytime there's a criminal act that's been done. It's not just an open and shut, one-day deal. It's, it can go on for days or weeks or even a month probably. So we know that. So thanks for doing that and hopefully we corral some of the strong-arm robbery stuff that's going on with these 7-11s and, and some of our resident, some of our business community people out here that are getting hit. Um, not making a lot of money anyway, so they're getting hit on top of it pretty hard if they get in there and do get some cash. Um, the other thing is, we recently put no-through trucks up on Shoulders Hill Road. Um, the signs are huge, 17 north and south. We, our nice Public Works Department Traffic Engineers made sure they even put one in the left turn lane coming off 17, uh, south going on to Shoulders Hill. So what I'd like to see is, we haven't slowed this truck traffic down enough. Uh, I encounter it in the mornings and, and some of the evenings. I have enough trouble getting out of my roadway as it is because of the volume of traffic that's already on Shoulders Hill. We, we ought to know that if they're on Shoulders Hill and in between Creekside Elementary and Pewsville Road, they already on the through truck route because you got Pewsville Road that has no-through truck on it. So we realized we got Suffolk Meadows covered and there's signs on the other end trying to direct them to go to 664, even though it might not say no-through trucks. But they're still using that lane coming off 17, going down Shoulders Hill Road and I'm getting a, a number of citizen calls, why do we spend money to put signs up if we're not going to enforce it? Now, your precinct up on the other end, up there, the second precinct, I think it is, uses Shoulders Hill pretty commonly. I see them go up and down because they come out of their precinct and shoot up Shoulders Hill Road to go to different locations they're going to. So my question is, could you please ask that we start paying attention to these heavy trucks? I'm not talking about the mom and pop little, um, you know, food truck or something. I'm talking about the 18-wheeler that's 80,000 pounds rolling down there 53 feet long. Those are the ones we need to put the concentration on. If we concentrate on a few of them, the message will get out rather quickly. That, that sign means exactly what it is, no-through trucks. So if you could just do that and ask them to pay attention to that and, uh, start doing some enforcement on that road. We ain't got to wait to educate them for 30 days or 60 days. The sign's big enough, you can, um, it's almost like a billboard. So there's no reason that a reasonable driver that's driving a tractor-trailer doesn't understand what that sign means. So I, I need some help on that end to try to control and cut that down. And I don't care whose truck it is, if it's that big truck going through there, they need to have whatever comes to them and, and let's deal with them and it'll slow that down. But all in all, everything you said tonight, I just wanted to make those brief comments because I appreciate what everybody's doing in the investigative branch. Uh, let's stay our heads down on this so we can get some of these people that are, that are hitting these places and, uh, we know there's bad actors everywhere. You know, there's, there's no question that bad actors come from different locations. But, um, I think it was great that you were able to figure out who those bad actors were and got a hold of them. Sometimes that leads on to the next bad actor to tell you who the next guy is. So it's all, it's all good. You get some good information from them. So I appreciate it and thank you for coming tonight.
Can I add one thing really quickly?
Yes, sir.
Um, one thing that I failed to say was we received such amazing help from our citizens.
Absolutely.
And one of the, one of the main reasons we had some really, really great opportunities to follow some leads was our citizens really jumped in and rendered assistance. So I just want to thank the citizens of Suffolk for that assistance.
You can't do it without the help of the citizens. I mean, it's, it's, if you see something, say something. A lot of people are afraid to say it because they looked at, maybe they'll be retaliated later on if somebody finds out. But there's ways for you guys to take that information and keep it private. And I appreciate those citizens that step up and do that because otherwise you'd be strangling all day trying to figure this stuff out. So then again, your comment about the citizens is perfect, spot on, spot on tonight, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Chief. First, let me, um, commend you and your staff for doing a superb job. Um, your investigative team, um, your, 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 um, investigative team. Um, but I, I, I would like to say this, um, I'm glad that you, um, presented your overview of what's been going on and, and, um, it's welcoming because I've been getting a lot of calls, of course, uh, from concerned citizens about the uptake in crime in, in the area. Um, and for you to come tonight and give such a, a great report, let the citizens know how much you and your staff are doing to curb some of the illegal activities that's going on in our neighborhoods. Um, just continue to do what you're doing. Um, my advice to our citizens out there, please, please come forth and give the police department the information that's needed so we can make some arrests for some of the crimes that's going on. Um, again, thank you for what you do and thank you.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you, uh, Chief. I just want to say to the men and women of your department, and, uh, I think they're doing an outstanding job with trying to keep our city safe. And it's amazing to see, uh, how fast and how quick some of the arrests that has been made after incidents have happened. But again, I know that comes from a lot of input from citizens and I hope that our citizens will continue to step up to the plate and that's the only way we can help the police department is by helping you all be the eyes and ears in our community. You can't be in all the communities in Suffolk. So we have to be there to support our people, our police officers for their safety and for things they need to get done. On the cameras, because I've been asked about the, uh, I know you touched on the flock cameras, but on the gunshot cameras, um, uh, sound cameras or whatever they are, uh, I think we have asked about purchasing some of those, right?
Yes, sir. Currently, we have 25 operational cameras in the city. Um, there are 25 more that we're expecting to come in. Some of them will be placed, are, are scheduled to be placed at the end of this month. The rest of them are in the permitting process, so they are to come. As far as the gunshot technology, the Raven system, that attaches to the Flocks cameras that we have, um, that is still, we're still waiting to get that and that's issues that the company is having, um, getting it taken care of. From the, just getting down in the weeds a little bit, my understanding is the company recognized that they have an issue with the batteries. So rather than put them out here knowing that they're flawed, we're trying to give them some time to get the problem corrected so that the product that we get is going to work like it's supposed to work. It's very important to me, as much as we get it, as much as it's important to me that we get it, it's important to me that the technology works like it's supposed to. We have to be able to take this information to court. We have to make sure it works appropriately. So we are waiting on that. Um, so it is, um, running, that portion of the project is running behind quite a bit. And obviously, as everything else is being touched by the supply chain issues and everything else, we're seeing some of that as well. But we do have 25 in the ground right now and more are to come. I think it's, uh, 50 that we have, um, total that will be up at the point that we've, um, completed the, the amount that we have.
Okay, thank you. I, I think that's a great tool and, uh, a lot of people have read about it and heard about it, uh, in areas where gunshots are being fired and they're interested in when Suffolk going to be able to put some up. I would hope that this council will continue to give a public safety all the tools they need in the toolbox to keep our city safe and the things that you need to make sure that we are able to respond appropriately when need be. And I know we can't be, just like I said early, in every, uh, community, but I hope we all will continue to work together to solve the crimes and the things that go on in our neighborhood. I told some people at a meeting the other night that they, a lot of time people said, well, I thought my neighbor was going to call. No, I, that's, if you get two calls, that's fine, but you don't wait for someone else to call if you know something. If you know something, then you should take the initiative to call yourself regardless of how many other people call. That's what you have dispatches for and that's what you have, uh, secretaries and other things for, is to take those calls and respond to them. So I do appreciate, uh, your information. I hope that the public understands that you all are out there doing everything that you possibly can to try to keep our people safe and continue up. Good work. Tell everybody thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, uh, Chief, yeah, I had to say that was a very good presentation. A lot of information and I think that, uh, you let the people know you are doing your job and doing the job like you have to do it, not what we expect to happen right away. But it was a real good presentation. And a couple of things I want to ask you is, uh, when you said, uh, uh, private parking lots, what do you mean? Give me more, what you mean they haven't, they're doing illegal, you know, drugs or whatever in private parking lots? Are you talking about where the malls at or something like that?
Yes, sir. So, so when we, we have to study criminal activity. So the things that people were doing to sell drugs 15 years ago, they're not doing the same thing now.
Okay.
Um, so one of the things that we're seeing, um, you can remember a time when they used to throw the, the shoes over the line and that was an indicator that you could buy drugs here. Now, if you're looking for shoes on the line, you're going to have a hard time because a lot of places don't even have lines up top. Um, they change tactics. So some of the tactics that we see now is that they'll go to a public venue, a public location, um, a shopping center parking lot. That gives the criminal actors some, uh, protection, if you will, as well. Because the probability of you shooting up a neighborhood is different because nobody's outside, it's, it may be nighttime. But if you're at a public location, the expectation in some minds is, I'm going to be more protected in a public place where all these people are because it's witnesses. But what we have to do is we have to really be vigilant about when we see something that doesn't look right, we call the police. We would rather you call us and we find out it's nothing than for you to not call us and tragedy strikes. Now, I don't want anybody to take that and feel like, oh, no, I can't go to any shopping center because I'm not safe. Um, these things happen and nine times out of 10, you're not even going to notice that they happen. But we have seen that with some regularity where people will just go to a shopping center and that will be where some drug transactions are taking place.
Let me ask you another question because you know I'm up on that. Do we ever hire the extra police officer at the precinct at Bridge Street? One time we were trying, could I always say that, you know, sometimes somebody might not be there and, and things is going on out there? Are we, is this active now? Like, somebody's always there at the precinct?
Um, I believe we have a, uh, some administrative staff that is always there, but most of the officers that we have are out. Now, as far as, as staffing goes, our staffing is going a lot better and we have hired a lot. Um, we have a, a very large class about to start the academy and we have some lateral transfers from other cities, some amazing talent that we've, um, that has decided to come and work in our city that we have. But as far as having a police officer stationed in each building, we haven't gotten to that point yet. Um, I would love to work toward that end, but right now those resources are really needed outside of the building in most cases.
Because, you know, like you say, y'all doing a great job, but, uh, I don't see them patrolling like they once were. That's what I'm saying. Because a lot of times you could see the police officer, but, uh, one of the reasons I'm saying that because they be speeding on College Drive, Old College Drive. They speed on there and sometimes I'm, I'm out there trying to get in the car. I wave them down. They are speeding. Don't break them, you know, so I don't know if, you know, get anybody out there just to monitor that sometime of day, anytime, you know, they see a police officer, they might think about, uh, slowing up a little bit on Old College Drive. So I, I wish you can, uh, see what you can do about that and I appreciate that. Thank you again. God bless you.
Councilman Johnson?
Chief Chairman, I just want to say thank you because we, we kind of needed this little pep talk tonight. We know you guys are right there and you are busting your butt and our guys are always in danger. But make sure you guys to understand though that, that in Suffolk, we're pretty unique. The people are there to assist you whenever you need. The people are there to assist you whenever you need them, just what you said. That's my point, and particularly in segments of the city. And Lou's asking you about where the drug transactions are. They're going on in my parking lot, between Franklin and Suffolk, and they're there, and you guys know it. I mean, they're, they're out there, and they're taking these country spots, and that's where they are. So our public is aware. Problem is, you don't want anybody confronting any of this, they need to call you guys and get you, when you can get on the site, but believe me, the people of this city do appreciate what you're doing. But we do get alarmed, so we thank you so much, and just keep doing good things. That's all we can do. We're part of the world. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I was going to save this for the remarks session, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you and Lieutenant Rowan and Patrolman Adams for attending our recent West End Civic League meeting and basically doing this presentation to our Civic League. I think it was eye-opening to a lot of the residents, the way that you guys are using technology, the advancements that you guys are using, the success rate that you're having in making some of these arrests. You know, as the representative of the downtown borough, you know, public safety is always a topic of concern and discussion, no matter where I go. And as the library comes onboard, as the festival marketplace comes onboard, having a secure and vibrant by downtown is going to be vitally important to the success of the City of Suffolk. And so I appreciate very much what you guys are doing, what you have done, and what you will continue to do. And I think we're blessed in this city to have you as our chief, and also to have a dedicated group of officers that we seem to have that care very much about protecting our citizens. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council, any other questions or comments? Chief, thank you very much for your presentation. I know there was a lot that transpired over the weekend, and it is kind of eye-opening, but when we have incidents of any type, my way of thinking is, we kind of analyze those incidents and say, were they preventable? And in most cases, they're not preventable. But if they were preventable, what can we put in place to prevent them? Most of the time, they're not preventable, and if so, what can we do to mitigate those number of incidents and put that into effect? And then, like I said, some of them are just not preventable. I mean, it is what it is, and it's going to happen, and it doesn't make any difference what type of precautions that we take. There are certain instances that will be beyond our control and your control. So the only thing we can do is react to them. I'm glad that the Flock cameras are working. We've got a budget coming up, so any of those tools that you need to help do your job, what they call them, force multipliers, I think is what we call them, anything that we can provide to you that allows your personnel to do their job and have a machine take care of part of it, please, you know, let us know, don't be bashful. Our citizens need to know and make no mistake that safety is top of mind, and safety is the number one priority. If we don't feel safe in our own homes, and we absolutely have no quality of life, regardless of how much money we have, what we build, what services we offer, if you do not feel safe moving around our city, then we will never be able to improve the quality of life of our citizens. Your foot patrols and bar checks, keep doing that. City manager, keep on with the code enforcement to go along with that. And one other thing I would like to say, I think I'm safe to say it, we've been talking about a public safety committee for six months to a year, and personally, I hope to have that up and running by next month, at least have it, the composition determined and pass an ordinance to reinstate the public safety committee. But this public safety committee would be different than the one that was abolished earlier. I foresee it as a means to provide a channel of communication between city government and our citizens regarding safety issues. And then the committee itself will promote what you want, which is community engagement. The committee needs to promote community engagement, and then together, we can develop strategies to improve the safety of the city's communities, neighborhoods, and also our schools, which have come to light also. There have been some very unfortunate incidents. As far as our school is concerned, we need to make sure that we're collaborating with them to the extent that we can to assist them in their safety needs. So with that being said, once again, thank you very much for your presentation, and I appreciate everything that your men and women are doing. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we do have a second presentation, and of course, the chief, Chandler had and his staff a real busy week this week, but also our fire and rescue have done some great work here over the last, well, they always do great work, but they had a unique incident they dealt with about a week and a half ago. Chief Rocky?
Mr. Moore, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to discuss the plane mishap and fire that occurred Saturday, a week ago, January 7. So the incident occurred just south, 5.5 miles south of our airport. The property on the, the map on the left side, as you can see, kind of shows the location of the airport as it relates to the crash scene itself. The, if I can get this, the, the road just to the north, Cypress Chapel Church there, Cypress Chapel Road, and I'm probably not doing a very good job trying to note right here, White Marsh kind of parallels Carolina, and below Roundtree is right here. So we had, excuse me on that, we had three structures that were denoted to the east of the star, and the star will denote where the actual crash scene was right here, and then the three structures denoted to the east, and this is Carolina Road that rides here. And so we were presented with an incident that challenged us because the Piper Papa Alpha 28 aircraft, this is a picture off of Google Images, this is not the actual aircraft. It crashed in a cutover area next to the tree line that was there. The firefighters, when they arrived at 12:19 hours, when just afternoon, arrived, and they found the crash about a quarter mile off the road. The hard deck of the road was the only location to get any heavy fire apparatus. Firefighters had to walk in with water cans, presented with a large fire that was near the tree line, again, marching in there, R Direct and same with PD, his life safety and rescue operations. So water cans, they got in there with water cans, identifying that rescue was not going to occur based on the crash. And I'm going to stay away from the actual investigation, all that's up to other agencies, but we were able to put a little fire out there, but the fire was progressing to the tree line at that point. The winds were out of southwest, about two to five miles an hour out of that point, about south-southwest. The wooded area coming off the cutover that was already cut, that where the homes were, the biggest part, our problem was the woods fire at that point. But if you see at 116, the weather changed a little bit, and it became 12 to 14 miles an hour. There was some cutover that was now having, and I'm trying to best describe, thicket-style, wire brush style overgrowth that was very dry, and that area became on fire relatively quickly with the large fuel, and it kind of overtook the fuel. At that point, the incident commander had already upgraded to a three alarm fire, which in case, I'll show you the amount of resources, ended up having 57 firefighters from Suffolk Fire Rescue alone, plus the additional equipment. But that was key, because when we started losing, when the fire started walking, our turn for walking, it was coming at us pretty quick, we needed that much equipment to save the structures that were on Carolina Road. We had some challenges. Our brush truck, Brush 1, and our RTV, RTV is like a Kubota four-wheeler with a water tank and hose and brush hose, they both got stuck. I was telling the manager on the scene that we're probably going to lose some equipment today, and thank you, Mayor Dumas, for saying that the budget's coming up, so you can replace equipment, but we didn't burn it up, so that's positive. The terrain in the woods cutover was pretty extreme. By 2:20, again, this is two hours post-crash or mishap, Ladder 3's crew, Brush 7's crew, Engine 1's crew, Rescue 1's crew were caught where the fire overtook them. Those are the radio, those are the words that Ladder 3's officer said, the fires overtook them. We got a little nervous there at that point. Jennifer was with me as a city PIO in the command bus, and to hear those words, it was pretty humbling to hear those words, and you, we looked out, and the fire was coming directly to three homes, it was advancing rapidly. So command ordered at that point, all resources actually retreat back to these three homes. So the, the three homes are denoted as the blue, that aerial photo, then I have the homes on the aerial photo, so I had to put them in there. So the blue area is where the fire is heading towards Carolina Road, and those three homes became our target to, and there are sheds with them to defend. Forestry 1, which John Rose is Forestry 1, that's our name for him in our CAD, but he works there at Virginia Department of Forestry, had two dozers out there, and were actually just amazing work with the dozers to cut lines. So at that point, we retreated, were able to save the three homes. The fire did advance up to the roadway on Carolina, which is a natural cut, obviously, to prevent fire from burning across, and we put the fire under control at 3:44. So again, the crash occurred about 12:09, and we're now looking at 3:44 hours when the fire was placed under control. We picked up about 6:29, and John Rose returned two days later and actually calculated 57 total acres that burned. The estimate that we did on our press releases and told the manager was 35 acres, but that was just our estimate, but it had been 57 total acres. So personnel, commands, point of view, the city manager, the fire chief, the deputy fire chief, three battalions, our safety officer, EMS supervisor, and Jennifer Moore, the city PIO, were all actively engaged in the operations on the command level. Suppression, six engines, ladder company, rescue company, four tankers, four brush trucks. It is good to note from our neighbors, Isle of Wight, that Carsville provided a tanker and a brush truck, which we have great mutual aid agreements with Carsville, with Isle of Wight as well, and that was, that was very seamless. Three medic units, SPD and Virginia State Police, excellent. A rehab bus, and then from state resources, the medical examiner should be up there, but Forestry 1 with two plows and the ME, and then from the federal side, the FAA and TSB and VDM should be up on the state side as well. So as you can see, the amount of, amount of resources that we calculated, command level was over 100 people, from fire rescue was 57, but you can't work an incident like this without local, state, and federal assets all working together. A little bit of pictures, the left upper one is a picture of John Rose behind, that's Captain Swept, but behind there is John Rose working that dozer. He works that bulldozer like, you know, like Dale Earnhardt worked a race car, it's amazing how he can work that thing. Suppression apparatus in the top middle, the command board on the top right and the middle bottom, that just gives you accountability when you have a three alarm fire with multiple assets. We had to move the command post twice because of the fire was spreading towards to the command post, and to maintain that much accountability is pretty incredible. Lower left picture and the lower right picture is just some pictures that were taken, I believe by city PIO, Jennifer Moore, that, that just shows the depth and the breadth of the landmass and the movement of the fire, and again, 57 total acres. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Moore to counsel for questions. Thank you.
Council, questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett?
Well, you know, I can't go without saying something about fire, it's just not going to happen. I happen to have the privilege of listening to the whole operation from where I was at, and from my perspective, I could almost sight in my mind what was going on, being in situations in my past career, that, you know, the, the resources and the incident command, it's a misfortune that the aircraft was the culprit that had a problem, and it didn't turn out well. But the way y'all jumped into this thing and jumped into it quick, you didn't have, other than the aircraft, discount that, you didn't have any real issues with loss of life or anybody. You saved three houses out there that could have been wiped out. There could have been three homes gone, three families displaced, that's a big deal. So when you take a look at the whole scheme of things and what I heard, I'm going to tell you why, y'all did a fabulous job, fabulous job, you do every time. I mean, even when I've called and had to get myself some help, the pure professionalism is paramount, and it's just great. So I want to commend everybody that was there that day, and for the mutual aid. That's the greatest thing we got, is we got the surrounding cities and counties that give us mutual aid when we need it, because we can't have every resource in a city, it just doesn't happen. So we have to rely on other people to help support us, backfill us, give us our support in other areas. But for Jennifer coming in and being on the scene, gets a taste of what a fire command incident system looks like, commend her for coming in that day and being a part of it. And the city manager went down and got his feet wet, came in and checked it out.
He was in command at one point, so.
So it was, it was a good experience all the way around, and it came out great. It could have came out much worse.
Could have.
So thank you very much for everything. You thank every one of those boots on the ground. I understand when they said it was overcoming, I know where they were going. They were moving, because that fire starts coming and taking them over, someone's going to get wiped out if you don't move. So that was, that was good that they recognized it and got out, you know? So thank you, thank you, thank you for everything. This city can rest easy that when you dial 911, and you ask for an ambulance or a fire apparatus to come to your location, you can bet it's coming. And every one of the men and women that get off of that thing, they've got the highest of expertise and experience, well-trained, they can count on the best care and help anywhere, anytime within this city. It's, it's, it's just impeccable, it's great, it's great. And I just want to say that because I know it firsthand, and the chief and his help getting out there, and he's got his issues, you got yours, it's a mixed bag, and everybody works together, and that's what brings us all together as a community and an operation. Can't ask for no more, you guys are super, I'm going to give it all to you because I can, and it's my time, and I'm going to give it to you. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Chief, oh, I'm sorry, Vice, Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, I'd like to thank you for the work that you do, and I thank you for the work for the city of Suffolk. Thank you for being a PC for the city of Suffolk. I heard about the fire, and I just can imagine, I don't know how to fight no fire, but I was talking to Al Moore, he was there, let me know what's going on. But thank you so much for what you do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you, Chief, for your report. I think it was outstanding, and you all have really, really been busy the last few weeks since before Christmas. You've had a lot of house fires, dealing with the plane fire, that just really stretched you out a whole lot. But believe it or not, I was out there hunting that Saturday morning, just before the plane went down, and we moved from there, over in that area, and moved over towards Harlem. So regularly, I forgot in Harlem, I got a call, said, you know, they have a big fire, a plane just went down. I said, where? They said, just about where we was hunting at. I said, well, thank God, we just left them out there. But anyway, I do appreciate the men and women of your department as well for all that they do to keep our city safe as well. Thank you again.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Chief, thank you for your presentation, and as usual, thank you and your men and women for your professional, timely responses that I think everybody's gotten used to, but we don't want to take it for granted. So thank you for everything that you and your people do for the citizens of Suffolk.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, we have one motion this evening, which is a motion to schedule a joint meeting of city council and the school board for Wednesday, February 1st, 2023, at 3:00 PM, unless canceled, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
Move to approve.
A motion for... A motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Williams?
Second.
A second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
We do have non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the policy services and affairs of city government and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Kelly Hangler, 9345 Eclipse Drive, representing Self regarding safety.
My name's Kelly Hangler, and I reside at 9345 Eclipse Drive in Suffolk, Virginia. And after those two wonderful, thank you, Chief Araki and Chief Chandler presentations, that is not the direction of safety that I'm going with, and it's actually an informative piece that I'd like to present to you this evening. A few years back, we had come before council because we had quite a terrible odor. It smelled like rotten eggs, and we called the state, we called everybody, because we weren't trying to be hysterical. I mean, this is a fishing community. We're used to smelling, you know, things, let's just say. And then later, we discovered by backtracking that we wanted to look at the definition of safety, and safety is actually an outcome. And that outcome, as has been put out here tonight, is all dependent on each of us reporting and saying and seeing and bringing facts forward. So, this might be something unusual that the council has not ever heard of before. And the reason why it would be pertinent in our community and may very well be tied to that odor, in fact, is that here in Suffolk, the peninsula that exists from Chukatack all the way down to the point is a very unusual landmass. It is of itself a peninsula, and it is isolated, it is farmland, it is fishing, and has survived here since the Virginia colony and before that with our indigenous. So, basically, what it comes down to is I want to read to you something about blue morl. Blue morl left in the ground is not harmful, it is buried and no longer exposed to air, allowing it to oxidize. Blue morl is excavated and exposed to air must be properly treated and disposed of and not utilized for backfill, for planting beds, or otherwise left on site. If the presence of blue morl is confirmed to be in soils that need to be excavated, a plan should be developed as how to remove, transport, dispose of the soils due to their damaging nature, and that nature, by the way, is acid sulfate soils, very caustic to all aquatic life, cannot be deposited in a typical landfill or used in off-site fill operations. The final disposal of the soil should be a pre-approved location permitted to receive such materials. Permanent disposal plans can vary, but should include adding a laboratory calculated amount of agricultural limestone to neutralize the soil. So, I could go on and on, but this is actually considered a type of hazardous waste. It is soil. If you cover it back up again, if you don't expose it in the first place, it doesn't have a problem, but that sulfuric odor, I cannot give you direct data, okay, to test for that, but everything on that peninsula extends beginning at a morl pit that was not blue morl, that provided us a cement factory and a place of jobs, and was closed in 1972, between 1972 and 1974 by EPA, and it extensively done its job, and we pretty much dug those pits out, right? But one of the reasons why I'm bringing that to you tonight is because it really is up to us to know our individual communities, and it may not affect everything across all of Suffolk all the time, right? We have four different segments of our own city shield with a peanut in the middle because our soils here have been proven to be the soils that grow the Virginia peanut. They tried to move it to Texas, but they had to bring it back because our peanuts don't grow in Texas. We love our peanut, okay? And so on and so forth, all increments of that shield up there, and yet, today, we have people in the community of Crin and Eclipse that cannot eat from the shoreline because the navigational longitude, latitude, bacterial tracking information has moved it literally on the other side of the working waterfront, on the other part of the wetland where that sulfuric odor was. Now, that is bacterial, it is not corresponding directly to that wetland, just to let you know, but how we discovered the blue morl in the first place was because there was a contractor contracted by the city who did not do what they were supposed to do. They excavated up the roads of Eclipse to put down water and sewage pipes. They dug it up, and they were asked to deposit it at the back of a piece of property, and everything where that water came, same odor, absolutely obliterated in the pond of a neighbor where extensively that drained to and out into the creek. So, I just wanted to bring you a little bit of information about safety, and when we bring things forward, we thank you for hearing us, and I'm sure you'll go home tonight and say, what was that, Ms. Kelly said? And it was one more time, everybody, blue morl. It does have places and spaces in Suffolk, and I thank you for allowing us to bring that forward tonight. And Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome, Councilman Rector. And Vice Mayor, I did not forget you. Thank you so much. Good night.
Our next speaker is Sylvia Banks, 401 York Street, representing Hall Place, regarding lighting on the 400 block of York Street and four-way stop signs.
Good evening. I'm Sylvia Bennett, 401 York Street, and my concern is that for 401 York Street in that area and Hall Place, there are no, there are two stop signs where there should be four, because we have traffic coming in from the park where Suffolk Meadows is and people are speeding. We have children in that neighborhood. We have elderly people walking back and forth to the store, and we have disabled people also walking in that area. And if we could have a four-way stop sign, that would, I'm sure, slow the traffic, because people, young people come and speed from Suffolk Meadows up to Fayette Street, just zooming by, and they don't stop. Even people that, the two stop signs that we have on Granby Street, they don't hardly stop. So, I know that we don't have speed bumps, I understand, in Suffolk, which would be great, but if we could at least address the possibility of having a four-way stop sign on the corner of York and Granby Street. And also, the other concern was that there is no lighting in my area. On York Street, I see that in the 300 block of York Street, there are lights on that street, on both sides of the street. However, on the 400 side of York Street, there is no lighting. So, I wanted to know if that was a consideration, and what is it that we need to do as citizens of York Street to possibly make that happen? Thank you very much. God bless you.
Final speaker this evening is Saul Banks, 400 York Street, representing Self regarding lights in his area.
Hello, everybody. My name is Saul Banks, and my neighborhood needs lighting, because I can't walk down the street safely. Like Ms. Bennett said, there's people running down the street 60, 70 miles an hour, and there's two stop signs there and there. We need four, because people come to the stop sign, they just keep on going. I've been in the neighborhood now for 17 years, and she's been there for 26 years. And we would like to get the proper lighting that we need in the neighborhood, the same ones that they have, which is the, I guess they call it the vintage, old-fashioned lights in the neighborhood, because from 300 block all the way down, and it starts at the 400 block. Nothing goes past that. So, I've been there for 17 years. I would like to get a four-way stop sign and some vintage lights, and thank you all very much for your time.
That concludes the speakers. Mayor?
We now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
We do have additions to this evening's agenda. A motion to nominate and appoint the following individuals to the respective boards and commissions. The Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Councilmember Leroy Bennett and City Manager Albert Moore. The Human Services Advisory Board, Shamika Council. The Library Board, Kimberly Ellis. The Planning Commission, Mary Ellen Bower. The Suffolk Clean Community Commission, Ally Hobgood. And the Western Tidewater Water Authority, Councilmember Timothy Johnson, Councilmember John Rector, City Manager Albert Moore, and City Attorney William Hutchins as the alternate.
Counsel, a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
A motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Rector.
Second.
Second from Councilman Rector. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to zero, as Councilmember Williams is out of the chamber at this time.
Is there any, are there any new business items that require the action of the city council for consideration? Hearing none. We'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time, I'll ask interim Director of Media and Community Relations, Jennifer Moore, if she has any announcements.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, and a warm welcome to Councilman Rector as well. Kicking off the announcements this evening, with a few photos from the investiture ceremony from the city councils on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, where council members Bennett, Butler Barlow, and Johnson were sworn in. Newly-elected Councilman John Rector was also sworn in, representing the Suffolk borough. The Suffolk Department of Public Works advises that the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization is holding an open house at the V.DOT Hampton Roads District Office on Thursday, February 9th at 5:30 PM. The open house is an opportunity for the public to provide input on the Regional Connector Study Phase III, its final stage. For more information on other open house dates happening across the region, please visit connectorstudy.org. The Suffolk Public Library is looking for volunteer actors to participate in their upcoming murder mystery series, Tangled Hearts, on Friday, January 27th. This is a wonderful opportunity for local performers to enhance their improv skills. Actors must be 18 years or older and can contact Suffolk Public Libraries for more information. The Suffolk Workforce Development Center is hosting a three-part series on credit and debt management. The series started on January 16th, but will run through January 31st and is open to all Suffolk citizens. The program will focus on repairing and building credit, as well as give tips on how to protect yourself from identity theft. For more information on the series and other job readiness programs, follow Suffolk Workforce Development Center on Facebook, using their handle @sufficworkforce. And a lot of exciting programming coming out of our Parks and Recs Department. Let's start with the League of Young Entrepreneurs. This six-week program is designed for youth ages 13 to 17, and will take place every Tuesday at 5:30 PM, starting January 28th, at the Suffolk, East Suffolk Rec Center. Participants will have the opportunity to learn tips on creating and owning a successful business from guest speakers and local entrepreneurs. This unique and educational program will focus on developing business plans, marketing strategies, and financial literacy. Registration is now open and can be completed online or in person at the East Suffolk Rec Up next, a teen excursion to the National Museum of African American History in Washington, DC. This field trip is designed for youth ages 13 to 17, and will take place on Saturday, February 28th. Teens will travel to DC and explore interactive exhibits and learn more about historical events. Pre-registration is required and space is limited. The registration fee is $10 per person. And just in time for Valentine's Day, Parks and Rec is hosting events for all ages. A Princess Spa Day for girls with disabilities ages 2 to 21 on Saturday, February 11th, and a Senior Sweetheart Ball on February 8th at the Miltier Rec Center. And I'm sure by now you're wondering, exactly how do I register for all these wonderful events? Great question. Well, the Civic Rec website is now live. This innovative tool will allow you to register for all exciting events that I just mentioned. And you can also, in addition to registering, you can also pay registration fees, rent facilities, and browse upcoming events hosted by Suffolk Parks and Rec. You can access this new feature on our website at sufficva.us. And of course, on your screen are the various ways residents can stay connected to the city of Suffolk happenings. So, thank you and have a great evening.
All righty, thank you. We will now move to announcements and comments by council, and Councilman Rector, we are going to start with you this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody for the warm and gracious welcome that I have received, not only since my investiture, but also this evening, and I want to thank the city manager for putting together a reasonably light schedule for my first time out of the chute.
Yeah.
You know, one of the, if you want to call it a perk that I've discovered of this job, is that you do get to find out a lot of things that are going on in the city. Not all of them, obviously, are happy events, such as the plane crash and the shootings over the weekend, but, you know, we also get notices about what Ms. Moore was just talking about, the Sweetheart Ball and the Princess Day Spa. So, I commend, you know, her staff and the department for getting that kind of stuff out to us and getting, more importantly, getting it out to the public. I would encourage everybody to take part in the activities that our Suffolk Library is putting on all across the city. My wife and I, along with a couple of friends of ours, have attended a couple of their sippin' spells that they held at the Nansman Brewery the last few months, and it was a lot of fun. It was very educational. We had a great time, and I salute the library and their creative staff for putting together events like that to promote the library. I would also like to, there was an article in the paper just a couple of days ago, where our superintendent of schools, Dr. John Gordon, was honored as a 2022 Superintendent to Watch, and he was only one of 24 superintendents neighbor nationwide, to receive the award for their use of technology to inform and communicate within the school community. And then I also would like to say, I attended the MLK Day event at Kings Fork High School on Monday, and it was a tremendous event. For me, the highlight, and I hope I wrote his name down correctly, but I believe the young man's name was Elijah Williams. He was a fifth grader, I believe, at Mac Ben, but don't fact-check me on that. But he has memorized one of Dr. King's speeches and gave it along, you know, he did a great job with it, all the voice inflections, all the enunciations, all the emphases were in the right place, the hand gestures and whatnot, and I believe that young man's going to probably go far in life. And with that, I will say, good night.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to congratulate Councilman Ward on his appointment as Vice Mayor. Congratulations, sir. Would also like to welcome Councilman Rector to our body, and I'm looking forward to working with you. Al, I'd like to thank you and your staff for a very informative town hall meeting last night at the Curtis R. Miltier Recreation Center in Wellerville. You guys did a phenomenal job. I'd like to thank you for that. Also, my word for the month of January 2023 is kind. Heaven are showing a friendly, generous, and considerate nature. With that, I want to say good night, but I got one other thing. I've been contacted by some citizens in the Pleasant Hill, Salt Suffolk area, and Al, you are aware of this. The problem in question is the 400 block of Hunter Street. We have the road signs there, the speed limit signs there. As you know, there's a lot of tra- As you know, there's a lot of traffic now, truck traffic, there's a whole lot of traffic in that area because of Madison Street being closed over near Planters. With that said, there's some families that live on the street that has kids, and they've gotten to the point where they have gotten signs to put in their front yards, little small signs saying, "Slow down, kids are in the area." I'd like to see the city, if the city would go out and put some signs up in that area at the entrance of County Street into Hunter Street, maybe a sign there, letting people know, murderers know that, you know, the kids are in the area, please slow down. And on the other side of Hunter Street, Factory, and where Hunter and Factory is, maybe something on that side, just to let people know the kids are there, because people are concerned about their kids, and we don't want anything to happen. So if it just means, let's put up two signs, well, let's do that. Let's do that. Let's not take a chance of someone's kids getting hurt, all right? With that, I'd like to say good night and thank you.
Councilman Fawcett?
I'm going to keep my, thank you, Mayor, I'm going to keep mine very brief, under 20 at least, because I have to compete with Tim Johnson and Leroy and the new Vice, the new Councilman over here, that had a whole sheet to half. But anyway, great investiture, welcome, Mr. Rector, to the House of Pain. We welcome you. And for the rest of them that were sworn in, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Johnson, and of course, Ms. Barlow is not here. And for our appointment to, Lou Ward, to Vice Mayor, we look to have a good year this year. We hope that we get to do some good things out of this council, and we got a retreat coming up, which ought to be very interesting. So anyway, I don't have a whole lot else to say, I think I've burned it out enough tonight, and I thank each and every one of you, and I'll compete with you later, Tim, on it. Thanks.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you. Well, I'll be very brief. We tried to set a time, we missed it, Mayor, by half an hour, forty. But anyway, I would like to say again to Chief Baraki and Chief Chandler, thank you all for your report. I think that's good information that you all got out to the public, and I really do appreciate it. I do have one request to take a look at. I've had quite a few calls and visited some of the homeowners up there at Northern Suffolk, at Florence-Bowles School. That is an area that people travels, I know the speed limit is 45 there, and with the parents dropping off kids in the morning and picking them up. They are asking if we could put a school guard or either look at a police officer being there for drop-off in the morning and pick up in the afternoon. I know, I don't know if we can do that, and I'd like for to take a look at that and see if we have to work with the schools or whatever to try and see if we can help them out there with that. That is a dangerous area there, and that curb right there, and with the speed limit and those, all those young kids trying to get home. So I'd appreciate it, we'll take a look at that and see what we can do. And with that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Johnson?
Pretty good. Everybody's being real brief. If this meeting is any indication of the year we've got coming forward, I'm a little excited because I think we've had a great meeting tonight. Mr. Rector, I'll give you all the credit tonight because you're new. Thanks for being here and welcome to the group. Congratulations, Mr. Ward, Vice Mayor, and everybody else that's here tonight. Just two quick things. Kevin and Kevin, great presentation tonight, thank you very much. I think our citizens will really appreciate it. I got other things, but I'm not going to do anything else tonight, everybody being so brief, but I will say this, Great Dismal Swamp, we're going to be talking about it some because it's way past time. Every time I turn around lately, there's an article about the Great Dismal Swamp and how much money's out there to make the place even better than what it is. So we're going to do it. I want to do it as a council, so we'll look at that at some point. With that, I'll say good night.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, I like, I do. Thank God for giving me an opportunity to be here and the position that I am on now. I'd like to thank the council for having the faith in me to handle this position, and I take it serious, when anybody give me an opportunity to lead or be one of the leaders. So I thank y'all very much. There's a lot of things I want to say, but I heard somebody tell me that just move on, so that's why I'm going to move on. And I feel that the people that, who have gave me this opportunity, a few of them that it was kind of, kind of hard, but it's done, so like I said, let's move on. I want to say I attended, what, the White Marsh Point Apartments. They was outstanding for them to build that area up like they did is something that I think that not only the people, but the City of Suffolk should be feeling good about building that apartment, apartments for the people in the Cypress area, what it once were, but now that's something they can be proud of. Councilman Rector, you did a good job. You really did a good job, you know, very, had some good information about being on planning, so I think that'll work well here, so you can fill out some things that we don't know, or a couple of things, that was pretty good, very interesting. And I had to agree with Councilman Johnson because I've always been a person for the Dismal Swamp. I mean, so many things that, for me not being raised somewhere else and know what type of attraction that could be for the City of Suffolk, like it says, I feel as way would do myself, so I think anything that you see fit, we can get together and try to get some things going on. I have some ideas, but like I said, the Dismal Swamp is one of the places where I feel that we can really make some hayway on that, that's a good opportunity. And like the police chief and the fire, and they always do a good job, you know, and I think that you got good leadership, and the fire chief, and he know I feel about him, but I just want to know when that other fire station coming, it should be coming soon up there. So, but anyway, like I said, I'm here to do the best I can do with the mayor and the council to make Suffolk be the city it should be and can be. With that, I say God bless.
All right, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. Want to start off by offering my condolences to the family of Marilyn Peebles Gibson, who is a very, very dear friend of mine and our family for over forty years. She had recently retired from Nesman Suffolk Academy, where she'd worked for over thirty years as a teacher's aide, but she's the type of individual, we need more of them in this world. She was very uplifting, never had a disparaging word to say about anybody, and would do just about anything to help anybody, that's just the way she was. And she would be dearly missed by all of those that had the good fortune to know her. I'll refer back to what the Vice Mayor had to say, Suffolk Redevelopment Housing, the grand opening of White Marsh Point, it seems like it was a long time ago, because it was back in the end, it was on December 29, I think, and of course, we had the investiture, so it's the first time we had talked about it, but it was a big deal, we got a lot of news coverage. I mean, I think we were on all the news coverage, even the Suffolk News Herald was out there, right, Jay? But all the TV stations carried it, and it was a big project, I don't know if you remember, but we went through this for years, putting the funding together. It was a $46.3 million project, 113 rehab units and 93 new ones, which we desperately needed, and we desperately need some more. Affordable housing is a critical concern all across the country, so great job of Suffolk Redevelopment Housing, city staff, and everyone else who had part in putting that together. Kind of doing this in chronological order, Saturday, I went to an Admirals' game, the mayor was there, I mean, the mayor, that was me, okay, the manager was there, he was there. I did the best job I could to keep him reasonably sober while we were there, and we watched a hockey game right over the glass, and we're sitting in the little thing, and we got food, and it was Suffolk night, that's why we were there. And that got a lot of coverage too, so I just got to show this off so you see what a Suffolk hockey jersey, Suffolk hockey jersey actually looks like. This is what it looks like. And all the players were wearing these, they weren't the Norfolk Admirals, this was a Suffolk Admiral jersey. Now, I really want to mess your mind up, and if ever in your wildest dreams you'd ever think I'd put on a pair of skates, you're dreaming. But anyhow, this will be one of those things I can look back and, like I said, the dig doesn't pay much, but this is kind of cute, so I'll hold on to that. The next day, I went to an installation service for Reverend Dr. Naomi Chambers out at the Pleasant Hill Union Baptist Church, and I've known Dr. Chambers for well over forty years. She's been committed to that church, serving that church for over half a century, and not only does she just serve in the ministry, but she's out in the community and has done a great deal for the community, so I was pleased that I was asked to be there and just say a few words, and there were a lot of people saying a few words, I mean, this is the program, and that's just a great tribute to her as to how many people were actually there to speak, not on her behalf, but, you know, to speak about, just throw out those type of accolades. The next day, the Martin Luther King Citywide Celebration was held at Kings Fork High School. It was well-attended, Councilman Rector mentioned Elijah Williams, if that's his name, I mean, this kid was phenomenal, okay? I hope they've got it taped somewhere, but for him to memorize all that, I couldn't have come close to doing it, in the way that he presented it, just like Councilman Rector said, you know, his tone, the inflection in his voice, his hand gestures, I mean, I don't know how long he practiced, but it really was quite amazing. So I'll see if I can find, maybe it's on YouTube or whatever, be worth watching. I do want to mention that Suffolk Humane Society has a Pause for the Arts fundraiser on February 18, '23, it's the first time in about three years. They're a little slow getting out of the gates, so we need some help, we need some sponsorships, get some tickets, it's a good time, it's good food, a lot, hopefully we have a lot of good auction items, live items and silent auction items at the Hilton Garden. We can get you hooked up with tickets, or you can go on the website, Suffolk Humane Society, and purchase tickets there. Councilman Rector, you've gotten your accolades today for getting through your first meeting. Welcome aboard, destined good news, what you might want to ponder is you have 95 more to go. So keep that in mind, I had to put a pencil to it the other day, 95 more to go. And with that, my quote of the night is going to be from Dr. King, and I think when we think about what's going on, not just in our city, but in the other states, in the United States, and in the world, I think it's quite appropriate, and I also used it Monday, and that quote is, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly." And with that, I will say good evening and see if I can muster up a motion for adjournment. No problem there. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Got a motion to adjourn from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Williams? Second, that, Mayor. Second from Councilman Williams, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
This meeting is hereby adjourned.